And I'll turn it over to Cindy and Jeff for a subject matter of the day, which is bond and sustainable volunteer fire departments.
Thank you Chairman and Commissioners. This is actually your third work session, but primarily we're going to deal with focus areas one and two today. If you will recall, at your March 2 budget work session, we had a lengthy discussion about bond election. You directed staff to go out and gather some additional information, which we will present to you today in the hopes of giving you some guidance from you on how you would like for us to proceed forward. After that, we will then go into our third, our second budget focus area, which is volunteer fire departments and funding. And if there aren't any questions with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Yates, Administrative Services Director and CFO.
Good afternoon. Thank you Cindy. Cindy mentioned, we're going to follow up on our conversation from the other day, a couple of weeks ago concerning the possible bond election projects. You gave us several tasks. We've gone back and fulfilled those requests and we're going to talk through that. So today, we're going to talk about the follow-up to the conversation for the bonds, the EDC comments last Tuesday. It's the last Tuesday, I think it was last Tuesday, seems like forever ago now. We did, we took the bond presentation, slimmed down version of it to the EDC, presented for the board members there, had some very interesting conversation, which I'll let you in on in a few minutes. We revised, prioritized the list from SPPCC. And then I want to give you a brief UCPS summary. Since we last met, Dr. Webb and his group have presented to their board and the board have approved their CCEP, the Community Construction Equity Plan, which we now have some numbers and some ideas about what they're discussing and what will happen possibly Wednesday night. So we can talk a little bit about that. Following that, we want to see if we can get a little bit more board direction concerning bond elections. And then I want to talk about volunteer fire department service model, kind of how we provide public safety services in the county, some of the core principles, because I think in the discussion, we have to kind of come back around to what are we trying to achieve as a county? What is it our hopes? What do we expect from our BFDs? Kind of what, what are the overriding principles that we have when we're establishing a new funding model and a new model for service delivery? And then kind of leads us to the funding models in North Carolina. You're kind of limited in the structure you take. There's 100 little variations, but there's really only three ways you really fund VFDs in North Carolina. Some of the challenges facing the VFDs, Cindy and I have met with probably 14, 15 of the VFDs. So we have a pretty good handle, kind of on what the challenges they're facing. We haven't finished our analysis and haven't done, kind of gone back, because our processes, we usually go back after we've heard from them all and kind of then break their budgets down. Some solutions are some suggested options you have as a board for how to go forward and then hopefully get some direction concerning VFDs is kind of where we would go. And Cindy mentioned this is our second work session, third work session on budget, the second focus area. Going back all the way into January, you remember, you asked, are we proposing, you approved, we're looking at bond elections, VFDs, and then the next discussion on the sixth will really be focused in on the rate neutral tax revenue rebow discussion. So my hope is today that, because that will be a lengthy process and lengthy discussion and a lot of detail is going to walk you through the calculation of how you arrive at a revenue neutral rate. So we're hoping to get past these topics today so that we have that one sitting last on our list. So that, the bond follow-up. If you remember, the direction was to seek input from the economic development mission that was done. We also requested from Dr. Seedorf and his team, prioritized request, we received both of those. Keeping in mind that our bond election proposed package, our list that we took back over to the EDC was the expansion of the jail, the emergency management facility, which will include the 911 center, 4-H Pavilion, Kankri Park improvements, historic courthouse renovations, Jesse Helms Park Development, the Southwest Union Library, and the expansion of the Union West Library. The one thing that you all see up here that was on the list last time was the park land banking. We, I think we heard loud and clear that that was not really a project you guys wanted to consider as a mission. So when we went back to the EDC, we put all these projects in front of them. In fact, we put this slide pretty much in front of them and discussed through some of the issues. And it was interesting, the conversation that they had. Their first interest was to jump, as I would expect most business leaders to do, and the community would want to jump to the bottom line discussion of costs versus revenue. Now, which of these facilities in that list makes sufficient revenue to cover their operating costs and their debt service? Well, we had to kind of walk through the idea that it's our government service model, largely this is about access and ability to use, not necessarily about revenue and recovery, cost recovery. But then they turned, they kind of turned their discussion then to, how do we do workforce development? We talked about quality of life and they weren't as enthralled with the quality of life concept. And please, Mr. Ainsworth, Cindy, you were both there, so if I could mischaracterize it, correct me. But they were more interested in what are we doing in our community to develop the workforce and kind of cover that gap between high school graduates and college kids, because not everyone goes to college. And what are we doing to train that next skilled labor class? So repairmen, air conditioner repairmen, mechanics, skilled manufacturing, those kinds of jobs. And what are we doing as a county to do that? Because in our discussions going forward, we kind of bled over into the SPPCC discussion as, in conjunction with our library system, SPPCC and the schools, do we have a comprehensive plan for how we're going to handle the training for those students and those, and that workforce? And it was, the large part of the conversation really hinged on that we need that plan before they would support pretty much any kind of workforce. And they really focused in on two, that and the low tax rate being critical to recruiting businesses to the community. And I thought it was a very good point, because having now, spent some time thinking through it, you know, we provided our library system and our libraries, and we talked about meeting rooms and so forth. We provide some skill force training, skill workforce training through computer classes, job search, those kinds of things. Dr. Seedorf and his shop provides a number of skills training, workforce development. And then the schools at their academy structure are providing different types of, the same kinds of skills. And if you, if we jumped ahead and looked at the schools' requests, and we're going to talk about Wednesday night in the work group, there is the Advanced Technology Center, which is designed for that same type of purpose. So you have the counties' projects, which I would lump together, the library projects in conjunction with Dr. Seedorf's projects, in conjunction with the schools' project, you have a lot of these workforce type projects, or what could be a workforce development plan in the community. And I thought it was interesting that the EDC kind of picked up on that concept and said, no, it's probably, tax rate is a real concern, and until we have kind of that cohesive plan for how we're going to attack and how we're going to build that sustainable workforce in our community, they would have a hard time kind of supporting any of the projects on the county side. They were all in favor of Dr. Seedorf's projects from the, from the training, workforce development. But I felt like they kind of, they kind of caveat it with that concept that we need a joint plan, because we have the schools doing something, the county's doing stuff, and SPPCC is doing different projects. So if we had that joint plan and how they all work together, we would be able to, they might, I assume we got to take that back, but they might support a bond election at that point. But they really did hone in on the low tax rate kind of jobs and skill set of training. Is there any questions?
Am I to assume this is one, two, three, four, five, as we go down this list as highest priority?
Uh, Dr. Seedorf, the SPPCC, yes sir. These are now put in the order with how, based on what we receive back from SPPCC, that they would, that they would recommend. So, and their total, if you were to take all of these, their total estimate right now is about 42.3 million for all the projects.
What is the individual prices on projects?
The multi-purpose is about 17 to 18 million. The purchase of the land is about 600,000. The new classroom building, I'd have to break them out. We have, we have them in a list, I didn't put them on here.
The Center for Technology, I think it was 7.5.
It's right around the A and B. And I can get you the A and B, I just don't have it with me right now. Commissioner?
So for example, like this SPPCC Center for Technology and Allied Health, you're going to have nursing classes, I would take it, or best for nursing and computer classes, those types of things?
I think the welding lab is also there.
It is.
And some manufacturing.
So that's the, that's the new building, that's?
That's the B O building.
And they're just wanting, that's money for upgrades.
Right, they want to finish the, yeah, they want to finish the development and partitioning of that building.
So what you know, we're saying is like, if we, for example, CAP has nursing programs there, they're set up for teaching nursing, maybe there's an opportunity to at night, have night classes there for nursing and, because we're already providing the facilities, the taxpayers have paid for the facilities and rather than maybe building a completely new building, we can joint venture schools, county and the SPPCC to put them in, in those classrooms.
And the, and the one thing we do not know, and I believe Dr. Seedorf confirmed this with you, and I know that I also heard it from Chris Platte with the EDC, is it's our understanding that the Center for Technology and Allied Health, they are actually looking at renting out the backside of the building to a for-profit company. So I would say from our perspective, if that arrangement goes forward, I don't know that we issue bonds for the development of that particular building, because I don't, I don't think it qualifies any longer. But I don't know where that is in the overall negotiations, but I do know that that is an alternative they were looking at as well.
Right. And I think it was Pat Cale at the meeting the other day, who's with our chamber, he made a really good point, that all these projects have kind of been developed in silos. You know, SPPCC is kind of doing their thing, and there's some spillover interaction with schools, but the schools are largely doing their thing. And the county is doing its own and stuff like. So what, what I think, kind of take, what I took away from the EDC as a, as a good suggestion is maybe there needs to be some significant time invested and working through kind of how these projects relate to each other and how to maximize that space. And conversations with Dr. Webb, his comment to me is he would like to see his classroom used day and night. Well, how does that then fit to what SPPCC needs? And how does that fit to our own libraries and how we use our libraries for classroom space? And is there space in our libraries for SPPCC to do training? Can we, you know, there's, I think there's some strategic partnerships, because they're all funded by the residents of Union County, to be able to develop a long-term plan to figure out how to train that workforce in, in the county. I don't think it's there. I would be honest, I don't really think that our projects, I think that SPPCC spent a lot of time thinking through how they want to develop their campus, but how those projects relate to what we're doing everywhere else in the county and how it relates to what the schools are proposing, I'm not sure we crossed that bridge to really understand. If we went out to the voters, you know, if you add the ATC project, the Advanced Technology Center project in with these projects for work, you know, say a workforce development type stuff, you're looking at close to 92, 93 million dollars spent on workforce development in those, these buildings plus the one from the schools. And I don't think we have a fully baked, comprehensive approach to how we achieve that. And I don't think it's something you can do in six months, nine months. I think it takes a while. I think it takes, you know, equal input from everyone involved. It's going to take public comment, public involvement as to what we need. Because we heard at the EDC, everything from, we need more skilled manufacturing, to we need more mechanics and folks that can work on these new hybrid cars at the small, you know, the small businesses and repair facilities. And I think that runs a fairly large spectrum. But if we're going to continue to try to push sustainable economic development in the county and try to draw businesses in, the two things that they said is we need to work through our workforce and we need to maintain and kind of keep an eye on our tax rate from that perspective. So, you know, that's what I would kind of, and that was my takeaway, and Cindy and Mr. Ainsworth, you were there too, was that we kind of need that thorough plan for how we go forward and kind of how we develop that. So, is there any other questions? Again, I can provide you the, the cost estimates for all of these if you'd like. As Cindy's right, on the Center for Technology and Allied Health, if they are leasing parts of the building, it changes the funding mechanism. We won't be able to issue taxes and bonds to do any of that work, which then puts us into a market rate. Just our effective cost of borrowing advantage is pretty much gone at that point. So.
With regards to workforce development, what specifically do these renovations and buildings and classrooms and land acquisition, what, what does it add to the bottom line as far as workforce development? Because all I see up there is a multi-purpose building, I have no idea what's going to happen there. Building A and B renovations, I have no idea if we're adding classroom space or if that's office space, if that's going to impact workforce generation at all. Now you're telling me they're going to lease part of the Centers for Technology and Allied Health. Are we building more classrooms because we're taking up space that we're leasing to be revenue generating? What's the new classroom building? Is it going to be for remedial English for people that don't know how to read and write? I don't know what, what these items are for specifically, so I need a little more detail. You know, I'm all for giving SPPCC more money and helping to generate a workforce, but I need to know what these items of 42.3 million dollars are going to generate for our workforce.
I know that some of the classroom, the classroom building and some of the renovations are to accommodate the early college program. They currently need some portables, they have a certain number of portables on the site and that would eliminate, Dr. Seedorf, I understand, is that would eliminate the large chunk of the portables used to house our early college students? On the other stuff, feel free, Mr. Ainsworth, or if you want to jump in.
The building, do you mind if I go through the list?
Absolutely.
Just in, the multi-purpose building is a student support, student tutoring and classroom space, and that picks up the growth that we've had since the addition of building B. We've grown, grown about 30% since we've had that last building where out of space. Building A renovation is the renovation of the, the bank building, the original bank building. We've, we've almost reached the end of the useful life on that renovation, and it would be the, it would upgrade that as part of the upgrade. We would hope to eliminate the portable classrooms. The building B renovation is converting building B, that newest classroom building, into an allied health building. The Center for Technology and Allied Health will drop off the list, because where it will be doing building B, the new classroom building is at the very end of the project list, which is going to be six to eight years out. And then the purchase of the Rogers Road property is that front corner directly across from Charlotte Pike. When the campus was originally, originally constructed, the property holders, the owners had held out that last chunk of about four acres. And again, looking at trying to purchase that to avoid something dropping out there that wouldn't be usable or can do something to the campus. The three priority projects are in order, multi-purpose A and B.
So the Center for Technology and Allied Health is no longer requesting funding, is that right?
We would drop, we would, we would drop that off the list as, as part of what we're trying to do is lease that space in back. And given, given the building B renovation and the other two projects, we'll drop that.
So how much classroom space are you adding with those top three?
The top, the top building, we're adding 77,000 total square, total square feet. Out of that square footage, I believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 40,000 square feet of classroom buildings. The building A renovation will, will yield some classroom space, but I don't have that number off the top of my head. And building B is a conversion of some existing space to more specific, allied health, allied health classrooms, so there wouldn't be any additional space to be upgraded and repurposed in the building.
So it's not going to provide any additional floor space for classrooms?
No, building B will not create additional floor space for, for classrooms, it will create specialized floor space for allied health.
So what does that, those three projects, are we still looking at 42.3 billion?
No, those will be under 30 million dollars.
Under?
Under 30 million. I'm meeting with the board, our trustees, Facilities Committee tomorrow morning to come up with basically a final, final proposal for all three, make sure that the board is comfortable with this, I believe they will be. But our initial estimates take the three of those just slightly under 30. I think that's what you have on it, so Jeff?
I think if you're around 28, you can.
So all of these updates and changes are for the campus here in Monroe, is that right?
That's correct.
So has there been any discussion about expanding SPPCC's footprint out onto the western side of the county at all?
Not at this point. We are partnering with St. Anthony's Catholic Church in Waxhaw, and we have an MOU with them to share their new classrooms and their new space. That allows us to build out and, and look at what the community is looking for, but we don't have any plans or requests at this point for space in Waxhaw. May I comment on the school board property? Because I am presenting that to the, our, our trustees, had discussions with the school board about pairing up and partnering on the, on the Advanced Technology Center, so I know that they'll be discussing that. But there is a significant willingness to partner. We currently have three memorandums in understanding with the school board and are looking at others that we've covered on, to share in this, commenting on these faces.
So moving on, like I said, like we mentioned, we received the CCEB. We can go Tuesday night at the board, saw that at the school board, and they approved that. And if you're following along, it's page 15 on the presentation. Keeping in mind, we have a joint working group, and we have not come back together as a joint working group since that CCEB came out. That next meeting is on Wednesday night, and it's my understanding we're going to spend some time talking about, going through that, having Dr. Webb make some presentations, ask some questions and so forth. At this point, I'm not going to be presenting from the county's perspective, or I don't have the intent at this point to do any presentation. So I think it's going to be really more evaluating the CCEB and then starting to hone down on how we even come to a recommendation. But here's kind of a quick snapshot look, and this has been, this slide has actually been reviewed by Dr. Webb and the schools, so this is in full acknowledgement and agreement with the schools going forward. The ongoing projects are about 20 million dollars. That would be the, the part of the list that's non-scheduled from perspective, they have two lists, they have the bond projects and they have the maintenance, ongoing maintenance projects. That's a, would be emerging maintenance of roughly 10%. And the discussion around emerging, emerging maintenance is, while they have their planned projects, they do have boilers go out and other projects that are kind of unknown at the time of planning, so they need some flexibility in that capital and maintenance money to be able to repair those. It would include approximately 1 million dollars for transportation and IT needs, just depending upon which one needs more attention in that year. And then would include the ongoing funding for the roofing projects. If you remember back, Nelson Hall testified that we needed about 3 million, 3 and 1/2 million dollars annually for roof maintenance on the brick and mortar side. So that's the ongoing pot, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, but that would be that 20 million dollars that was set aside through the legislation and what you raised the tax rate last year to cover. So that would be their ongoing maintenance for their schools. That wouldn't necessarily decline over time, but every year they, they would work on that list. The brick and mortar projects, they're looking for approximately first 13 million to start the projects and follow 2015. The remaining projects will run through about 2020. It eliminates the use of, largely eliminates the use of portables, but not completely in the county, so most of these projects are going to add capacity to schools. The biggest two projects for the ATC, the Advanced Technology Center, which you mentioned earlier, and the Sun Valley replacement, essentially a replacement Sun Valley facility. Take those two projects together, they're close to 120 million dollars alone of the 220 million dollar list. And then that would meet their projected capacity needs through about 2026. And one of the discussions that I know Cindy's had with Dr. Ellis and I've had with Dr. Webb is that they're anticipating in the next 10 years, about that timeframe, to see a 6,000 to 9,000 student decline in their enrollment. And they're watching a bubble move through, but there's not a bubble coming behind it of students. So one of the things I would think that we're going to talk about on Wednesday night is, how does that 227 million dollars in the additions and brick and mortar additions, how does that relate to the long-term student population plan? And are we building facilities that meet peak capacity, you know, normal capacity? Are we, you know, how are we approaching that? Because a bond is a 20-year debt. And where does that get us if we do all those projects? How does that address student capacity going forward? Are we building classrooms to have them set empty in a number of years? And how does that then relate, again, the ATC relate to SPPCC? One thing I did want to kind of discuss, because I think, I still am hearing kind of questions out there related to two-thirds bonds. The notion, and I've heard from the schools, that there's some expectation that those are available and that the commission can just issue them and there'll be no impact. Well, A, the commission is legally authorized to issue them, that is correct. But the second part of that is completely untrue, that there is not funding available or there is not financial capacity to take on that additional debt without having a budgetary impact. So I kind of put this slide together, it's a little crowded, so I apologize, but I kind of want to walk you through it, because this is an illustration of how this two-thirds capacity, two-thirds funding kind of works. If you start, we'll start over here, and this is 2002, 2003, four timeframe. You can see the county didn't have a ton of debt, wasn't making a ton of debt payments. This is, I apologize, this is a annual debt service for schools table. So this is what we paid from 2003 all the way through true projected 2021. So you can see as we went through the 2000s, kind of had this uptick. At 20, 2007, the county issued 220 million dollars of new debt. And you can see that come on here, and it issued it as variable rate debt. So as the market in 2008, 2009 started to struggle, variable rate debt became more costly, and that's where you kind of see the spike. And during that same timeframe, I think that the county kind of froze the schools, or gave them a minor decrease in their operating funding. Really where you saw it come out of, both the county and the schools stopped doing capital that wasn't bond funded and really tried to hold the line. It was also during this timeframe, right here, the 9, 10 area, the county laid off 88 folks and staff. And I think during this time, the county took the brunt of that cost growth, because if you remember, we had our revow right in this timeframe, our last revow, so the property values and growth were very limited through here, coming into 13, 14. That growth rate is around that time period, is right around, in fact, we just did it as part of the revenue neutral calculation, averaged since our last revow is about 1.4%. So as you can see, we went from right around 24 million to our peak year of about 48, 49 million. And again, the county cut its services at that point to be able to maintain that debt service and cut significant population. During the same time, remember way back to our discussion on demand for services index, the demand for services during this timeframe were following kind of that same slope. So not only did you have, you had a growing county in this timeframe, but then the residents that came here started using services at a higher level. At the same time, the county was cutting back personnel, cutting back service capacity. And that was to make these debt payments. That was probably the biggest driver going from '07 to 2012 that we had as a county. So what does that mean for two-thirds bonds? Well, the concept of two-thirds bonds, if you remember, is recycling authorization from the voters. It allows you to not go to the voters to get approval, but to have the authority to issue for whatever projects you see fit. And the, and the concept behind that is that once you hit this peak year of funding, that as you pay down that debt, there would be capacity, funding capacity. So kind of like if you have a mortgage or if you have a car payment, and you pay off your car, you have two options, right? You can go get another car and have the same payment and you really don't lose anything. Or you can reallocate that 300 dollars a month to something else in your household. You see the big red line right here? When we had our budget discussions last, last summer and spring, what we wanted to look at was what could or what should have the board raised as far as tax rate in this timeframe to cover that annual debt service? Because if you remember back, there wasn't tax increases through here to cover that growth in debt service. The county, again, cut its way to cover that annual debt service. So if the county had raised its rates, what would that have been? That's where we arrived at the 8.2 cents. We said, if you hit this peak timeframe, and it's give or take, because it's not a perfect one-to-one or a perfect match, but that's just our estimate. And if you remember, that's what they based the legislation on. The 19.5 million and 19.7 this year is largely based on what 8.2 cents will be valued in the county. Well, you see the big red line, at that point, what the county did is it took that 8.2 cents, which would represent every, all of the capacity from right here up to the peak, and said, schools have that as payoff. Okay, we're going to continue to make the payments, but we're going to raise the tax rate. Okay, we're going to continue to make the payments, but we're going to raise the tax rate and have that as pay, and have that as pay-go for an ongoing source of funding. So all that to say that at best, this would be the, the gap between your peak and the, and your top, your debt payment for each of those years would be your funding capacity that wouldn't necessarily have an operational effect. But because we shaved off that eight point two cents and said, here it is, as ongoing pay-go funding, all of the possibility, even if you got over the philosophical hurdle of being able to issue that debt, the funding capability without having an impact to rates is pretty much used up in that eight point two cents.
Mr. Rush.
So that eight point two is related to the twenty million that you're talking about they're going to need annually?
Right. The eight point two then covers this part, the second bullet, that whole block right there. And what it does is it provides an ongoing funding source for the, the capital maintenance. Because the challenge you had is as the county hit in this timeframe right here, hit the recession, all of the pay-go capital money dried up. You've heard the term bond savings and kind of through debt. So we were, because schools were still building, I think the last school was opened in two thousand nine. The schools were too, still building, but that was all used debt money. That wasn't ongoing pay-go capital money. So when we got to, um, twenty thirteen in this timeframe, there was no ongoing source for the schools to use for that capital. And that's kind of where we ran into the brick wall. It worked in a high expansion period, the strategy worked from a perspective of being able to provide debt for ongoing expansion projects. But when you hit a phase where you had to start maintaining all of it, there wasn't a good source for that. And I want to point out too, the large reason you kind of see these kind of go from up here, we started as a county aggressively in twenty eleven and twenty twelve and then on into thirteen. And Commissioner Hagan was in pressure, I was like, your first meeting came in and we started terminating swaps and those things. We aggressively started to rework our portfolio at that point. And that's where you see that decline, as deep as those declines are, because we reworked our portfolios significantly to, to allow that impact to reduce. And what's happened is over time, what we've done is worked through our staffing issues and some of our service delivery issues we've had as a county. Because if you go back to the two thousand twelve, eleven, twelve timeframe, there was no real addition to service or, or any expansion of services on the county side to cover that increasing demand. So you, you had needs at social services, which we're all aware of. You had needs at the sheriff's office, you had building permit inspection needs. I think, uh, one time the delay was like four or five days to get inspections. So what the county has done because, um, and this has been our philosophy all along, we've not been, it's not been secret, but it's always in the document, we always talk about it. But from where these were, we made cuts on the county service side to cover this increased debt service. This savings is going back, and it's not a ton each year, but that savings that we've generated has gone to help support the growth or the return to service that we, that we have. We have still not got back to the watermark of how many employees and those kinds of things. I would argue that's largely because we're able to provide a lot more service with efficiency advancement. But there also has to be, um, some caseloads and those things, you have to hit some equilibrium to be able to provide that service. So that's kind of where, and I think the important part I'm talking about two-thirds is you, if you were to issue two-thirds debt, your options would be out of that eight point two cents, out of twenty million, you could use some of that capacity, again, if you could get over the philosophical hurdle of, um, doing it without the vote, or you'd have to add some tax rate. Because I don't think we want to be in a position as a county where we're cutting back services again to start to cover that, um, new debt service. And I can tell you that going from here, um, going out into fif- sixteen, seventeen and so forth, your growth is still only going to be right around that one percent number. So the one percent in growth in total revenue are in total on, and have lower tax across the county is not going to be sufficient to cover a, a new debt issuance, particularly of any kind of magnitude. And then a second to that, um, all of the sales tax, because you're thinking, what about sales tax? Well, sales tax, all of, all of the sales tax we have now, it's about thirty million dollars, covers the debt we already pay. So, um, from about, right here is where sales tax picks kind of ends when it comes to paying for schools debt service. So the remainder of this is made up by the abnormal tax rate. Does that kind of help? Because I know you guys are getting questions about it, there's always, um, comments about it constantly going on. And I'll bring this slide with me on Wednesday night if there's a question comes up, we'll be able to talk through it. But, Mr. Rush.
Yeah. So what you're ba- basically saying, if you look at twenty twenty one where we've declined with our debt, if we use that two-thirds model, it's going to be up at the top, because we're, we're not declining.
Right. Anytime you add, what you could do is just assume you add a bar on top, that'd be the new debt service. And it would start you back up here and then you start to do that same decline. So if you were looking, where would you come to this point? You'd be somewhere, you know, toward, probably twenty twenty-five, that's where a significant portion of your debt. Because you made a big jump. You went, I mean, you're looking right here, like thirteen, fourteen million to your peak year, you know, like seven years later, you're sitting at forty-eight, forty-nine million. And we're still one of the highest debt load counties in the state from the perspective, not just schools, when we take all our total debt, which, uh, the schools represent on the general fund side about ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. So, um, all of this is to say, any capacity, financial capacity, if you were able to even get over the philosophical side of it, all of that would be that eight point two cents. So it's that annual twenty million dollars that, that, that you're providing for ongoing maintenance is kind of, it's kind of taking up any of that capacity that the L G C would look at it and say, well, this is why we think two-thirds debt is a usable tool. And in a normal situation, you would have been able to do that. But this is not a normal situation from that perspective. So, so that kind of makes sense in how, how we arrived at that? Are there any questions about that? And I, I know you've heard this, I, I've illustrated this orally, but I wanted to put a, put a table up and argue with some of the information, because I know you, you may be hearing it out in the community. I know we've certainly got questions about it in our office, so. So now the tough part. Which projects on the county S P C C side? Is there a preferred election date? The approval of the process, kind of going back, if you remember, the process would be you tell us what, if any, projects you want to do, then we'll go about finalizing and getting more detailed projections of costs as well as operating budget impacts, uh, for each of those projects, so that you can make an educated decision when it comes to the date. And I will say, uh, from the county side, that I don't believe that these projects are absolutely service critical. They are, except for the nine-one-one part of the emergency management facility, that we probably have to come up with a better solution for that. But there are other ways to skin that cat. So, um, with that, I'm going to take any questions, comments, or direction.
I'll make the same comment I made last time, because when you talk about the economic and developed community concerned about our increase in tax rate, what, Mecklenburg's in eighty, low eighties?
Like eighty-four.
Yeah, something like that. So you're, you're talking about something that could push us close to, to Mecklenburg County, which would be counterproductive to having economic growth in, in Union County. Especially when we, we've got what, revow, we're going to talk about in a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
We're putting the cart before the horse. You know, I don't, from the county's perspective, uh, I think we need to look at alternatives to that as opposed to a bond referendum, which would mean an automatic tax, tax increase. And I can only speak for myself, you know, peers might want to join in, but, uh, it's, the timing is terrible. You've got some great projects up there, I'd love to see a four-H arena, you know, libraries and things like that. But, you know, the timing is terrible.
And if you remember, for every hundred million, it's worth five cents on the tax.
So you said, our total the other day, I think you said was close to thirty?
Um, our total, if you include the jails, it's probably eighty or ninety-one.
Oh, okay, that'd be five cents if you did that. But the jail, I understand, is actually under capacity right now.
But their administr- where they're having their issue right now is the administration aspect of, of the jail. They, they truly do have some space issues that, um, but as it relates to the number of beds that are filled at our facility right now, yes, we are under capacity.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Simpson.
I'd just like to go back to what you sort of led off the discussion with. And this may tie in rich to what, what you just said. I feel a little bit, uh, a little bit, uh, uneducated or, um, uninformed in terms of what direction to go from, from, from a couple of points that have been made. Where, uh, I believe I heard you say that, uh, the school board was intent on eliminating all portable classroom facilities?
The vast majority, I think there's still that, or our sum.
And at the same time, you made the point that within ten years, we're going to be ten, nine to ten thousand students less than what we are today.
Uh, six to nine are the two numbers we've heard, kind of in conversation.
To, to me, is that, is that good planning to take those, to take that step to, simply to take a tool like you have with portable classrooms, completely off the table? Borrow money to bill more when you know you're probably not going to need them in less than ten years, ten years or less? Uh, the, the other thing we have is we've got the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room is a, is a lawsuit and what's going to happen when that comes in? Those kind of monies that we potentially have to come up with. I, I would, I would like to go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sure.
No, I was just going to make the point that, uh, maybe we need to take this joint working group. And I know they probably got more in their place than they want at this time, but maybe, maybe we need a joint working group, add some, uh, community college folks on to it and some E D C folks on to it. And maybe try to get a handle on that consolidation of efforts, consolidation of needs, so that we don't all build the same, uh, same shop and we only need one shop.
And in our conversations with Dr. Webb, kind of building on what you said in the lawsuit, just to kind of clarify, in our conversations, and Danny's here, so currently I'm going to characterize this as that in that twenty million takes care of the projects that have been discussed as part of the lawsuit. So the, if, if you keep your funding structure the way it is, what schools going forward is that twenty million dollar piece, then you'll resolve those maintenance issues. That's really the ongoing part. All the bond election stuff is really for expansion of capacity and, and complete new building faci- and facilities. So that's just, I'm, I'm just clarifying for you, just so you know, um, for the, for the lawsuit, that, that part, that gets largely taken care of over the next few years through that twenty million. So I think to your point, um, it's a very viable option to go forth and do that joint working group to look at how all these things are going to relate.
Can I ask a question? I agree with Commissioner Simpson. Uh, we do, we do need more additional research. Now, these are bond referendums. Do we have to make a decision in the next thirty, sixty days whether we want to do a bond referendum? Or is it not even going to go on the ballot until possibly November of two thousand sixteen?
The technical rule is you have to hit the filing date.
And that's four months?
As you would a candidate, it's about four months. I'll tell you as staff, we think it's a ten-month leap time to get it honed in on dollar values, operating budget impact, because it's a two-sided coin. There's debt service, but there's also operational impact. And I think for you as a commission, when you go to the, when you put it off the ballot, actually you can understand what the operational impact would be of that, you know, new library, that extra classroom, all that other stuff. So for, I can tell you legal, your legal deadlines versus your practical deadlines. Your practical deadline is if you wanted to do something like a joint group and really have it fully thought through and have a quality job done on it, you're probably really looking at the first election in twenty eighteen, not the twenty sixteen, because you have, there's some complicating factors. You have three independent groups that you're going to need to drop, four if you want to include the E D C, and five if you want to include the chamber and heavier representation. So those five groups have to come together, gain some consensus on a strategy. And before you even start to put brick and mortar plans to it, you have to come to concepts and strategies and agreement on those things, which is a facilitated discussion. It's not, um, won't happen overnight, you know, because if you think about the EMS group, we, we had a singular issue performance standards for EMS and that still took us close to, what, six weeks to kind of hammer out? And that was with those groups meeting every week, two, three, four times a week. And we met every week. So this is exponentially more complicated and exponentially more personalities and, and groups, independent groups involved. So my recommendation is if you wanted to go that route, that the aim be for doing it in twenty eighteen, because I don't think you can get it together, unless and you see it differently. I really don't see being able to get it together in a quality format that you can, that the community has input and buy-in and to meet everyone's needs until, until that timeframe. Now, in twenty seventeen, it'll be complete. I don't see it going, I don't see you going running into twenty eighteen and saying, oh, we just finished it. But you'd have, still have that same issue by twenty seventeen, we would need to be finishing it off doing, you know, ten months before the first election in twenty eighteen, which would be the May. So, um, I don't know, I, I don't know if you could get it together in a format you'd be happy with in time for twenty sixteen.
Yes, Commissioner Rush.
You know, what the E D C said makes a lot of sense. And what, uh, you know, it's kind of like the last meeting that we had, and we were talking about thinking outside of the box and kind of being creative. And it's not just our board, but, you know, a lot of different boards, even, even our municipalities can participate in this. Uh, we have an opportunity to reach out to all, uh, bodies in Union County and say, you know, let's come up with a way that we can fix our, our taxing issues. And, um, let's come up with some good ideas, you know, merging, you know, getting some of those administrative offices at the sheriff's department located in municipalities, maybe. Um, we could take the technology that the schools are implementing with, with computers, use that to our advantage, uh, maybe, and use floating classrooms. They can still get rid of their mobile units, um, I think maybe by using, floating those teachers from, you know, using, using the facilities one hundred percent rather than seventy-five percent. So there are some creative things that the school board can do through policy that would eliminate the mobile classrooms and would eliminate the, uh, need to, to build extra classrooms to accommodate and get forward that bubble is. We've been using mobile classrooms for over forty years, I feel confident, well, at least, at least thirty years. I was in one, I, I think a lot, you know, a lot of other people, you know, in Union County have been in one. It's, it's a tool. And, and whether we need to eliminate them, I don't know, is they're very efficient. So maybe there is a need to eliminate it from an efficiency standpoint. But the school board can, can figure out ways around that. They, you know, they've got a lot of talented individuals that are on the school board and, and they, and they'll figure out theirs. Uh, yeah, we have some municipalities in the room today that are here for other reasons, but, you know, some of our municipalities could probably have space or, or have things, projects in mind that would help us with, with the sheriff's situation and would be glad to have sheriff's deputies, uh, out at work and out of their offices. So I, at this point, and the way the economy and the, and we are, you know, one percent growth, we may need to look at putting anything off until the next bond election in twenty eighteen. And that would be our projects and any other projects until we can get time. And I'm, I'm, right now, unless something convinces me otherwise, that's kind of where I'm leaning. It's, um, wait until twenty eighteen before we do any bond referendums for, uh, you know, additional comps.
I feel the same way, I'm, I'm concerned with the tax increase. I, I do like the idea of, uh, Commissioner Simpson, of bringing some groups together and discussing how some synergies can be, uh, brought together with, with all these different organizations. I, I think there's some cost savings available. And if we can better utilize some facilities of the schools while taking care of S P C C's needs, I think that's the right way to go, even if it does put it off to two thousand eighteen. I think alone, just, just having those groups working together towards a, a common goal that can benefit the whole county, I think that, that helps us from an E D C standpoint.
You basically have it budgeted in for approximately nineteen to twenty million dollars for the schools for the next, how many years?
As long as you don't change that rate, and that's the policy of the board to continue that allocation, it's as long as the board wants to keep it that way.
You know, one thing I've heard from the administration is it would be nice to be able to plan multi-years and there's some efficiencies that they can gain there. We can't commit, you know, we can't commit to future boards, even next year, even though we'll all be here, we can't commit to that board. But, um, you know, I think maybe some, you know, planning and, and policy that, that we, you know, we have some stability in their funding may go a long way toward maybe helping them, you know, realize to work with us and we want to work with them. Uh, that twenty million over the next eight years would be, um, a hundred and sixty million, which is their limit, or two hundred million on bonds, what I've heard, maybe more.
It'd be about two twenty-seven on the bond. It'd be about 227 on the bond, but it would be 27. 160 for their maintenance, not going in maintenance fees. Keep in mind, they have 53 buildings plus, 53 schools plus, so.
So, if we can, you know, like I said, if we can make some kind of commitment to keep what they have, and if we're only gonna grow up 1%, the bubble's gonna hit and go away, and then we're gonna have empty classrooms. You know, I don't, I mean, that, that many students, that's quite a few students spread over 53 schools, so it's, you know, it could be just a few. Maybe the impact's not seen as great, but definitely would be seen if you, if you expand the classrooms, when you have empty classrooms, you could use that floating, um, schedule or, or use those classrooms at 100%.
I, I'm curious for the, I really would like to hear the results of the working group to see how that goes. My concern, they're at around 43,000 students right now. If they drop 15 to 20% after this bubble goes through, and, you know, we wanna expand capacity and have a long-term debt obligation for empty classrooms that we don't receive funding from the state or federal government for, I, I have a concern. But, but I'm, I'm comfortable with taking care of the facility needs that are out there. I'm just, I'm very hesitant about obligating the county to a 20-year debt for fewer students. Okay, so let me see if I can recapture, unless anyone else has kind of, kind of what I'm hearing. That at, at minimum, we want to have kind of a consolidated approach with SBCC and the, and the county projects. While we wait for the working group to kind of work out what it's gonna do with an eye toward that 2018 timeframe, and how that's gonna work for workforce development, and how those projects are gonna relate to each other, and have that consolidated, um, approach throughout the county is that the direction that I'm kind of hearing. So, it's not no on the projects, but kind of wait until we have that approach thought through and, and presented back to the board. And we may have some interest in building that off the back on, on the working group, once the working group kind of edges its work on the initial schools' request.
I didn't mean necessarily that, I meant concept.
Conceptually. You have the concept of a joint working group, members from the school board, members from the county, members from SBCC, members from the business community, whether that's the EDC, the Chamber, even some municipalities. But that's kind of the approach. So, on the, again, on the county projects, the SBCC projects, it's work through that process. The rest, which I think is appropriate, wait for the joint work group to make its recommendation, and then we'll have the discussion concerning of those projects, which, and what we'll talk about at that point. Is that kind of?
Do you need a vote?
Just, no, I think that's good.
Is that direction?
I'm comfortable with that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that was the undercard. Now, I guess we'll go ahead and make a bit. Sustainable VFD funding. Are we good if we don't?
We're good.
We're good, okay.
Jeff, a question there for just one more. Board has not made a decision on whether to hold a bond referendum in 2016 or 2018.
So, if you remember back, what we talked about, our goals for today, so, we got down to here now, concerning the bond election just about, right? We've had, made no decisions concerning a referendum, but the direction you have provided to us is to work on those other concepts, not necessarily bring back a proposal package for you. So, now let's talk about volunteer fire departments. Catch back to where we were. Um, but I think to really kind of have a quality conversation about volunteer fire departments, you have to really come back to the service delivery model for all of the services that governments provide in the, um, in the county. And recognize that we strive as government and you as commissioners to ensure that there's a base level of service. We have a base level of service from public safety perspective of ambulances. We just spent a large chunk of the fall going through that process of establishing that EMS base level of service with the Sheriff's Department. There is a base level of service that you can inspect. There's a certain number of deputies that are always on, and the response times and so forth. Um, everything from libraries to the human services, all of these things have base levels of services. And that's really kind of what we try to do, is create that uniformity across the county, and try to provide a level of service across the county at the level to which you as a commission desire. The only area that I see that this model doesn't really play out at this point is through that fire safety discussion. And really, what we're talking about is a readiness to serve versus a use model, taxes versus fees. The types of things that generally in government you have, would have fees on are those that are not compulsory services or not required for your everyday safety. Okay, so, Canyon Creek Park, library, special programs, those things which I can make a choice in my own volition to use or not use, because they're, they're based on my walking through that door and consuming. Well, when it comes to public safety, the funding concept's not about use, but it's about readiness to serve, because you don't wanna be in a position like they were in Tennessee a couple of years ago, where the VFD shows up at a house, checks their roll, roll book to see if they've paid their fee, but they haven't paid their fee, they let the house burn down. What you, you as a commission and that readiness to serve model are doing throughout all your other services is building a structure that ensures that when the resident needs that service, whether it's EMS or the Sheriff's Department, that that is going to show up properly equipped, properly trained, and properly staffed. Versus that fee structure, if I go to the library, I can, or, or I have the option to may or may not choose to participate in the class, or if I wanna go to Canyon Creek, that's up to me every day. So, then that leads us to kind of core principles. When we started talking about how do we then, if that's our service delivery model at this point, and we wanna make changes and improvements to protect the residents, what is the foundation of that? What, if, how would we know when we've hit a successful funding plan or structure for VFDs? Well, I think if you hit these five things, that I think you've hit really, you've hit upon what you needed to do for the residents. And I think it's uniforming in the base level of service regardless of density. Because that's one of the things that you really have in the county is going from west to east, a drastic change in the way services are provided and the level of service provided, or even the assuredly of the service provided. From time to time, you may or may not have someone turn out when you call and need fire service. Uniforming in that base level of service regardless of ability to pay. In your system right now, you have a huge discrepancy between, um, some of the larger fire departments, VFDs, and some of the smaller VFDs. So, even that, that, those residents in that, um, that fire area, they, they may or may not be receiving, receiving the same level of service based on their ability to fund that. And under your fee structure, there's a limited ability to fund it, particularly with the cap, um, with cap fees and so forth. Fire protection and suppression being part of the total public safety effort. And what that means is that if you were to look back over, um, all the calls and our discussions with all the VFDs, what we're seeing is that anywhere between 60 to 85%, depending upon how they count, car crashes are medical calls, not necessarily fire calls. So, the traditional concept that you're, that you're funding fire protection only is kind of a misnomer. You're really funding as part of your comprehensive public safety model, first responders that show out for medical calls as much as they do for fire. In fact, more than calls than they do for fire. And that is woven into the fabric of your police department, your Sheriff's Department, your EMS system, as well as your human services and building inspections, and how they all relate to form that fabric of public safety in the county. And your EMS system works because of its interaction and its, um, how it works in conjunction with the VFDs. So, it's part of that large public safety effort. And keep in mind, of all the services we fund, the readiness to serve version and a base level versus the fee structure are a, kind of a mismatch. Funding methods and levels are determined by the B O C C. And I think it's important to note that of all the 18 VFDs, that there's one group that's responsible to the entire county for the public safety of its residents, as well as responsible for the tax rates. And that's you as the board of county commissioners. You set the, the service level. The volunteer fire departments are allowed to run in the county by contract. They don't run in their own volition. So, you have been individually contracted with each of the 18 volunteer fire departments, and those contracts go back to the early 90s, I believe. Um, so that each of those exists by contract with the county and provide that service. So, in that way, much like EMS, they are similar to our community partners in that we contract with them as vendors to provide that service. Without that contract, they couldn't run. And that is regardless of, at the VFD level, of if they have borrowed money or purchased equipment or anything like that. Now, in a practical term, you'd be hard pressed to provide fire service throughout the county without them. So, that's why they are a partner in that process. And then adequate stacking equipment and facilities are essential. Going back across the county, you kind of have this disparate service level that in, you have the haves in certain parts of the county who are able to, um, for instance, most of the tax rate districts have the ability to fund themselves at a much higher level than most of the fee districts. So, you create this kind of imbalance across the entire county. You don't really have that base level of service. And I think it's always important to note, while we don't have it up here, I think sustainability and the sustainability of the model is kind of a thread that runs through all of these things. When you want, when you build your service model, your funding model, to provide and ensure those fire services, protection and suppression, that however you do it has to be sustainable. And if it's not sustainable, then it's, it's, you're really not doing a whole lot for the county other than setting it up for another point in the future to have to re, redo the whole thing. So, what are the funding models in North Carolina? Before I do that, I wanna jump back, because we had the question when we did our 2-on-1 briefings. And everybody should have a map, and put it at your seat. Because I did want to talk about real quick. And I'm sorry, the pillows are kind of light. Let's see if we can turn on some lights. Because the question always comes up, you're talking about response zones, municipal boundaries, fire districts, and so forth. This is a sample or example of kind of how, uh, fire, all the different layers. If you were to look at insurance districts, fire service districts, um, and the fire funding districts, it's kind of like mismatched cake, okay? Almost like bricks out there, kind of laid, can be laid on top of each other. Two can be under one, you can have them all lined up, one-on-one, you can have multiple pieces. So, if you're looking at this, this is Mineral Springs. All of the white represents the Mineral Springs funding district. So, this is the tax district. If you're looking at the black lines represent, actually, the Springs VFD, we call them Mineral Springs because that's where it's at, but it's Springs. Um, the black represents Mineral Springs proper boundaries. So, you have a municipal within your funding district, and then the red represents all the response zones for which Mineral Springs is authorized to, to run it, if you will, to respond it. In addition, if we were to overlay it in insurance districts, in this case, they largely tie to the response areas, but it is possible for you to have multiple insurance districts within the response area or crossing the boundaries and so forth. In fact, if you're up here, you're real close to, your, your closest fire station may be Wesley Chapel in some parts of the Springs district. So, this is kind of an optical representation. All of these things nest on top of each other. And if you were to pull back, then this is inside the county, and there's all the different VFDs around it. So, what we're talking about today primarily, and at the end, when I'm talking about a recommendation, what I'm talking about is how to deal with the white. Not necessarily how to deal with the response areas or in the municipalities, but how do we deal with the white component of this, which is the funding, the funding mechanism? And in this case, for instance, if, um, that the funding mechanism has to remain in Mineral Springs, but you could contract in theory, you could have two Mineral Springs volunteer fire departments, and you as a commission could split them right down the middle on 75. So, that's, you know, there's a lot of layered in pieces that, um, kind of complicate the issue, but you have to take them kind of in bite-sized chunks, what, if you, for instance, what we want to talk about is setting the funding. We set the funding structure. We believe a lot of this other stuff, if it needs to change, can work itself out. So, this was requested from one of our briefings, so I just wanted to kind of show that to you. You have that map. We'll also put that map on, on our website. We got it just before the meeting. And I'm sorry, I apologize to the group. I didn't have enough copies to pass out. Does that kind of make sense for everyone? And this is the insurance district versus the response district versus the funding district, um, discussion that you read about in the paper.
Doesn't the Mineral Springs, and I happen to be part of that, and had the unfortunate opportunity to get to use them the other day, which they did an exemplary job and responded. And I'm up here closer to Wesley Chapel. Phenomenal service. But in this white diagram here, kind of there, how do you do it, Curtis? You've got five, six mile to keep you within your insurance districts and everything. Most of the lines are kind of drawn within that?
They are. And that's why I was saying, the insurance district runs closely right now with, with how these boundaries are established. Um, so, what that basis, what the white represents is, um, if your house sits right here, you're paying, um, Griffith Road fire fees, not Mineral Springs tax. So, if you're inside the white, you're paying the tax. If you're outside, you're not. But yeah, if you're talking about the insurance part of it, the insurance districts are gonna be based on, um, proximity to the, the stations.
Station that services you.
That services you, so. And that's why it's, it's a little complicated. You always hear the discussion of services in all the different districts. And Jeff's always quick to remind us that they're not synonymous with each other. They can be nested into each other, or each one can be part of another. There's this kind of mismatch of how it has to work, as you can see in the, in the fire response zones. There's multiple fire response zones within Mineral Springs, but they're all within the Mineral Springs funding area. So, um, gets more complicated depending upon where you are in the county, but we felt like Mineral Springs was a good example of that. So, that can help everyone to kind of optically understand what we're referring to. So, with that in mind, how are fire services then funded in North Carolina? There are three primary ways they are funded. Um, the first one is the fire fees. Union County uses that structure. Um, it was done through special legislation. And we're one of two counties that do it, and my understanding is New Brunswick.
Brunswick.
Brunswick, right, Brunswick. Does it, but they are changing or getting out of it completely, so that we would be the only county in the state that does it that way. Um, and it's really based on that fee-for-usage model, which as we talked about, for the public safety services, the fee model really is not sustainable, really doesn't work, because on a fee basis, you're really, you're trying to equate cost of service versus that readiness to serve. And when we're talking in a few minutes about fire service, fire service, facilities, equipment, training, personnel, is all about that moment when you need them and getting, as the cost grows, meet the standards, having them there. So, that fee structure does not really necessarily work in that model. And again, one of the way, one of the concerns, I think, that when they were set up is that the agricultural community was concerned about having to pay a tax on their equipment and essentially vacant land for, um, fire service. So, that was some of the drivers, largely the driver, my understanding, one of the drivers of setting up the fire fee structure. Your other two options, which are more standard across the state, and most, uh, counties use a variation of these, other than general tax. I guess there's a fourth structure, which is a general tax, which we'll talk about later. But you have the rural fire protection district. The county really has two. It's Henby Bridge and Stallings. Um, these are done through tax rates and contracts for the services. The, uh, the difference between really the rural fire protection district and the county fire service district is that in the rural fire protection district, the residents in that district at one time, I think it was 1984 for Henby Bridge, voted by, or produced a petition, a petition and voted to have the commission establish that district. And when they did, that set the tax rate cap at 15 cents in that district. But beyond that, um, the way the county does it is there's a board that oversees the Henby Bridge, and you as a commission then establish the contract and the tax rate in that district. And it's interesting to note that the rural fire protection districts, when there is a vote or was a vote at that time, it authorizes you to levy a tax to fund the fire service. It's not necessarily an authorization for a premium service or an authorization or direction that you have to use the local VFD. What it did was it authorized you to charge, to have a funding mechanism, that white area on the table, versus telling you, you have to contract with XYZ. You have, you as a commission always have the ability to split that district and fund it through a tax rate or contract with whoever you see, um, fit to, to run that service. Uh, but again, all of the, um, all the tax collected in that district has to remain in that, that district for service. And a proportional share in the sales tax. The sales tax is allocated out based on the, um, tax levy. So, their proportional share of the sales tax goes over, and I think it was a couple hundred thousand dollars, at least for Henby. I can't remember, it's off the top of my head. The other option is, or the other funding mechanism is the county fire service district. And this is more what you have with Springs, Waxahon, Wesley Chapel. And this was done. And this was done not through petition process, but you as a commission have the ability to set these districts up and then have a dedicated tax within those districts to fund that service. Other than that, they really act and work like the chapter sixty-nine districts do. Okay? So when you're looking at these two, and you're talking rural fire protection versus county fire service districts, the big difference is one was done by petition versus the board holding the hearing process and putting it in. Other than that, it's the same, any tax must be used in that district, and there's a proportional, proportional share of sales tax that is then allocated to that district. And again, the one that's not up here and a lot of counties use is a general, general fire tax, or a general tax across the county for fire services. So what are some of the current challenges facing the VFDs? And I think one of the big, kind of the big misnumbers, if you will, when we talk about VFDs, is the concept that VFDs are truly a volunteer force. We have, was about three, maybe that run completely with volunteers that don't pay at all. The remainder of the, the VFDs in Union County range everything from paper call, depending upon your certifications, to full-time staff. So we don't really have in this county anymore that traditional five-one-C-three structure where they raise their funds through barbecues and bake sales and taking pictures, and we've heard Christmas tree sales and turkey shoots and newsletters and pass the hat. We don't really have that structure anymore in the county, because they're no longer sustaining themselves. And I think that's a hangover, that, that, that concept of being able to fund through donations or through fundraisers is a hangover from a time when fire service was much less complicated and the standards were not as high as they are now. From equipment to a two-in, two-out program, to, you know, even the planned obsolescence of fire bunker gear. And bunker gear at that time probably wasn't three thousand dollars a set, didn't expire after ten years. So what's happened is twofold, that the fire service changed and the volunteer dynamic in the county has changed such that turning out firefighters on a volunteer basis is a real challenge, and then the fire service has changed in a way that it requires a higher level or more professionalized level of firefighter to provide that. Even in a volunteer capacity, when they're being paid by call, they still have to go to a higher level of training than they used to, or back in the day when they originally, the concept of VFDs was established in North Carolina. And I think that's led to a whole host of issues. So those issues being staffing. We have a staffing plan, a staffing model that was put together, I believe by the Fire Commission a couple of years ago, that starts to address that, because you have to turn out at least four firefighters to allow them to fight that fire on interior structure, two-in, two-out, you have to have two people outside. Not all VFDs can muster that. So to kind of combat that, what they've done is started to pay overnight, to pay daytime staff when volunteers couldn't be there, because what we've heard repeatedly is, in some of the rural parts of the county, our folks work somewhere else. They don't, or don't have the jobs anymore that allow them to, when they get a call, to up and leave from their desk and go and answer that call, or they can't leave a job site. I think we talked to one who was a corrections officer, he can't up and leave from where he's at to go respond to that call. So they've started paying daytime staff and paying, even in some places, nighttime staff to ensure a minimum level of coverage sufficient for them to turn out. And I believe, if I remember, we had two, two that are on probation for not being able to turn out enough firefighters to call. So staffing, to me, is one of the number-one things we heard as we were meeting, is to how to keep their volunteer losters filled and how to keep enough people in that station so that they can respond when the residents call. The other aspect, or the other kind of piece is the equipment aspect of it. We have all varying degrees of fire trucks, SCBA, which is the breathing equipment, all these things across the county, brush trucks, they're all in various stages of readiness to serve. And a lot of the smaller stations kind of keep things held together and going to be sure that they provide that service, but you don't have a uniformity across the entire county, because in a lot of places, that fire fee is just enough to cover that annual operating cost, not necessarily enough to build up a reserve or build up funding to replace an engine or a pumper or any of those pieces. Those pieces of apparatus cost between three hundred and fifty, two words up, about seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars, depending upon what it is and how you equip it. So what you see is those smaller VFDs in particular, don't have the resources, can't raise the funds, can't borrow the money to be able to go out and buy those pieces of apparatus on their own. And subsequently, then what you have is, in that district, the residents are being served at a disparate level against those, those VFDs that can afford those, those apparatus. And then additionally, you have the facilities discussion. A fire station can be in between two or four million dollars, and we have some that are in disrepair, or we have some that have reached their useful life. And as the fire service has changed, the apparatus has changed as well, it's gotten bigger. So you have some fire stations, and I believe it's Fairview, that have to actually fill their truck with water, it won't fit in the station. And they have, they tried to put it in the station recently without, without it being full of water, and they ripped the lights off the top. So you have these stations that were historic or have been around forever, but aren't really big enough any longer to provide adequate space for new apparatus or new staffing levels that are required or anything like that. So you really have a lot of new stations in some parts of the county, but others that just aren't at a level sufficient to provide protection for you and the firefighters themselves or provide protection in that area. Funding and sustainability, and this is kind of, to me, the first step in that process of kind of establishing that core service. Our funding model is not sustainable. And, and when we look at it and say, okay, if we were to take a fee district, I'm kind of jumping ahead real quick, but if you were to take some fee districts and look at their value from just an adware perspective, there's not enough value in a lot of our fee districts to support the VFD that's there. And if we were to do that with any of our other services and start looking through how we provide law enforcement or how we provide EMS and provide it based on the adware value or their ability to pay, I think that we have a very different service model. But looking into a sustainability issue, being able to fund and provide sustainability, I think you have to have a comprehensive approach to how we provide that service throughout the entire county. And really, in my mind, it's no different than what we did with EMS, is we looked across and we said, you know, we want to have one uniform response time throughout the entire county, one service level, and we want our contract partner, our vendor, to provide that service level. And in this case, the volunteer fire departments are really no different from that aspect of it. And that leads me to kind of the second point. The contracts that we have in place with our providers are, go back to the early nineties when it was moving, transitioning from bake sales and barbecues to fire fees and other funding methods. So the, the contracts we have are kind of short on standards, short on recording, and it's not a critique of the contract itself, because it was written at a different time. But like we find with a lot of things, just like the EMS contract, it just kind of has been renewed or exists until it's terminated. So the contracts we have in place aren't structured sufficiently to allow us to ensure that base level of service across the county. A lot of the fire departments are meeting what we would consider a base level of service, and I don't want to give you the wrong impression that all the residents in the county are in danger. They're not. But we don't have a mechanism at this point to ensure as we move forward and as the funding model changes, that we can assure that there is a adequate service level to go with the funding provided. And then again, the final challenge we have, which I know is focused here for Weddington and Providence, and we really won't have any discussion at the end as to what our direction is, or what our proposed solution to that is, but the last issue is what do you do with Providence and the Weddington area and how do we move forward? So kind of getting back to the whole point of the whole discussion today is how do we establish that standard level of fire protection throughout the entire county? And I want to go back, because I think that this funding and sustainability discussion has kind of been ongoing. I know the first spring that I was here, three years ago, I guess my third spring, this was an issue we started talking about. And I know even before I was here, before I was here, there's been a lot of discussion going on around fire funding, even to the point where the fire fee legislation was bumped from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars, and the sunset provisions changed in that. We've met with every one of the VFDs and had a discussion about the fire service delivery, have had discussions about the funding model and how to move forward. So this process, we're kind of in the third iteration, our third year of this process of trying to kind of come to a sustainable funding model and a funding structure. And I will tell you, part of the, the difference, I believe, in this year is having more conversation, that we have Curtis on board and have an in-house fire expert, a lot around what that service contract should look like as well, which is an added dimension that we haven't had in the past several years of that discussion. This is one of the other questions we had. So when we talk about funding and sustainability and funding models, I think it's important to note, you already have some form of general fund, funding structure for your volunteer fire departments. It's not a matter of if we're going to do something with a general fund, it's to what extent. And as you can see, starting here in twenty-eleven, we were about four hundred and sixty-five thousand. And this base station subsidy for the newer commissioners is basically an amount, I believe it's twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, if I remember right, that every station that's not in the tax districts gets to operate their, their station, basically for the mutual aid part of the concept, so that they are part of that overarching system. When, so there's a base level of funding that everyone gets based on the number of stations, and there's a discounted part for a substation.
It's like half.
It's like half. And then what I'm referring to then is this block on top. This is the discretionary or the general subsidy beyond the station subsidy that those VFDs get. And you can see, going back, just like everything else, if we went, you know, as we talked about during the discussion on two-thirds bonds, during eleven, twelve, thirteen, we kind of held flat and held tight to that station subsidy. Even in twelve, when the bottom was kind of dropping out, you were right at, you know, under four hundred thousand dollars. But then without replacement and as we worked through capital plans and staffing plans and staffing models with the VFDs, what we saw was an increased need then for that additional subsidy. And when we came to last year, when we were working to implement the plans of the Fire Commission as far as staffing and equipment, we saw a significant need. And the reason, one of the reasons this is bumped up is because there's a significant capital investment in that one-point-two million. And again, going back, a lot of these VFDs can't fund their own capital replacement, they don't have the ability to raise the money, they don't have the ability to borrow the money. So the county manager felt appropriate, and the board agreed through adoption, that we needed to fund the VFDs at this level. And then looking then at, as we've had our individual conversations, this will, will be much higher in twenty fifteen, or twenty sixteen, depending upon how we move forward. But I think it's important to note, the county is committed to volunteer fire departments. If you remember last year, this increase going of about a million dollars from here to here was one of our, was the, a large part of our total general fund cost increase. If you were to take that in conjunction with SBCC and in conjunction with EMS, what you would see is, and the Sheriff's Department, what you would see is, we commit, we've largely committed our dollars to those public safety agencies and some of our community partners. So I think that that's, that's a positive, I'm not pointing that to be a negative, but I want to point out that the county is already heavily involved, and this is more than ten percent of the total funding, heavily involved from a general fund tax perspective in the funding of the VFDs using its tax dollars, not just its fee dollars or its localized tax dollars. So, okay, we kind of identified all the problems, kind of identified all the issues. So now how do we move forward, or what are some of the options you as a commission have? I think there's four, essentially four funding structures that you have at your disposal. There's a hundred slices, these are four high points, so they can all be, they, there's all variations on each of these individual components, but for, for the purposes of kind of getting some direction, you have a status quo process where we continue our fund fee structure. Again, if you were to continue your fee structure, I would just anticipate that that, that steep curve for a while will continue. And what we've said, that we believe that the funding fee structure is not sustainable, and I think that that's been the position indefinitely. I've heard that from all the fire chiefs, particularly in the fire fee districts, but even in talking with some of the chiefs from the taxing districts, that the fee structure was never intended to be a permanent fix, but was only a Band-Aid solution at that point. Individual fire service districts, keeping in mind that like Waxaw, Wesley Chapel, and Mineral Springs, you as a commission can establish eighteen fire tax districts, or fire service districts, and establish a tax in those. The challenge we see is it's not really practical from a perspective of, in all municipalities that they would serve, you'd have to go in and get permission from those municipalities to provide that tax, plus then you would siphon off portions in the general fund of sales tax, and it'd create really an administrative burden on the county as well as those districts. And you still wouldn't get to the point where you properly have assured adequate service across the units, because when you compare the adware value, which is what that tax is based on, in some districts, that tax rate could be fifteen to thirty cents, depending upon the equipment replacement. So you would take a hundred dollar fee and convert that in some places to a fifteen-cent tax rate, which would just put an onerous burden on a lot of those taxpayers. Because the other thing that you would find is in a lot of the tax district, or a lot of the fee districts, especially the rural ones, the, the resources just aren't there to cover that increased level of tax in that localized area. So then there's, I'm going to flip three and four real quick, because I think three is really part of four, just depending on how you look at it. You always have the option of doing a general county-wide tax, not declaring the county a service district, but just adding pennies to your general fund tax. And if we would have taken this direction last year, knowing that we don't have a revow in hand, but it won't be too far off, if you would have taken that direction, it'd be a house right between two hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred and sixty-five thousand, if they were paying a fee, would actually pay less through the tax structure. And the reason that is, because the total of the entire county versus the individual districts is greater. So you would capture some areas that are municipal districts already, and we, we would talk through, depending upon direction, how to kind of help offset equipment needs and firefighting needs in those municipal districts that exist through that general tax dollar. But what you would do is essentially take a proactive role as a county commission in setting that county-wide tax rate and ensuring that base level of service across all the districts. You would set all the tax rates to zero, you'd set all the fees to zero, and then we'd go through a process, and I'll talk about the process in a couple of minutes, to allocate those resources based on the individual needs and the service needs and the contracts that you would have in place. And then the third, the fourth option, oop, wrong way, the fourth option, this is listed third up here, is really a hybrid of the, of the county-wide general tax. You have the option to create that county-wide version, but also then leave some autonomy in the five tax districts you have, so that there would be, you would net down their tax rate based on the county-wide version, and then their localized version would be added to that. So, pick on Johnny for a second, if Henry Bridge is like five and a quarter, and you did a three-cent county-wide rate, Henry Bridge's specific localized rate would be two and a quarter cents, and the county-wide rate would be three cents. His taxpayers wouldn't see necessarily a change in that, but there would be an additional level of funding for additional services and additional service needs, which would be probably above and beyond the base level of service that the commission has decided to set throughout the entire county. The resource allocation model, because I think once you get past the funding, and these are kind of listed in the order, we would recommend you make decisions in. And when you're looking at the funding options, before you can sit down and kind of go through how you allocate those resources, I think it's important to know the box you're playing in, because before, if you go about trying to set a price for service without knowing the menu price, or try to go about setting standards without knowing the cost of it, I think we, we run a danger of having a cost that's just beyond the level where the county can sustain it. So when we're talking about it, what we would recommend is determine kind of a funding structure, and then for this year, the funding option, there'd be no change on the VFD side. It would just only be the funding. How we provide then the funding, and how you as a commission approve their funding, doesn't change the services they provide. We have their budgets in hand, we would continue to make a recommendation for this year as to what that looks like, and then spend some time working out the contract issue, which I think is just the resource allocation. There's a lot of different ways to do this. The process we have right now for resource allocation under your current model is that each of the VFDs submit pretty much a line item budget. We go through, the team is Cindy, myself, Curtis, some of my staff, in conjunction with the VFDs, and essentially negotiate out what their request, their final request, in conjunction with what the affordability is in relationship to the entire county. So we look at how much in conjunction with all the other services we provide, as mentioned earlier, the public safety aspects, you have the EMS, the sheriff, the human services, all those big requests get put together, and then in conjunction with the VFDs, we make that, rate that recommendation to you, A, that it's sustainable from a county perspective and that you can afford based on the direction you've given us, and B, that the VFDs can use or is sustainable for the VFDs, particularly when it comes to equipment and what types of equipment and the modeling, as far as... particularly when it comes to equipment and what types of equipment and the modeling as far as personnel. And I can tell you that in the last couple of years, what we've really relied on when it comes to equipment and personnel is the Horizon study for equipment and the personnel plan, I think it was put together by the fire commission. So...
And a lot of the information comes out of the 2009 fire study as well on equipment replacement.
And I think that our hope would be is if we establish our funding model, then to work with the VFDs, because you can see, once you have the resource, once below that, we have that service delivery contract, it's going to take us the next year to negotiate contracts and service levels. And if you think back to the EMS process, the EMS process really hinged on the service levels and kind of what the service standard we want to build across the county is. And I think that's a good point to have that discussion with the VFDs themselves and kind of get all the firefighters around the table and say, okay, what's appropriate from a fire service delivery model as far as requirement from your perspective? We want a contract with you, we're going to change it, we're going to put service delivery requirements in, I wish it does be. But from a funding perspective, we think that to have, to ensure that that's a sustainable model, to set the funding model first is really, is important. And again, from their perspective, from a VFD perspective, how we fund them and the method in which we use is largely immaterial. And talking with particularly the fee districts, they didn't see really any change in how they operate since that discussion of the service delivery contract and kind of how the resource allocation model works. And what we really heard, the biggest concerns we heard even from the fire tax districts, were really how the resources would be allocated. So I think how we work through that aspect of it, and in conjunction with our own staffing here at the county, kind of gets us to that comprehensive service delivery model. But again, I think that sits on top of your funding structure. I don't think you have to have a funding structure, or the funding structure follows after that. I think it follows in front of, to be able to kind of build the frame or the box for which you work in. And then I think if you solve these first three questions and kind of come to your plan on the first three questions, what you'll do or what our recommendation would be for Providence and Weddington fire area would really present itself. Because if you decide on a funding structure, you decide how you're going to do, provide services in the county, how then we address that challenge or that opportunity, kind of just narrow down. There you go. You have infinite sets of solutions. And every decision point narrows your set of solutions down, such that when you get to the bottom, you kind of know where you're headed. Again, all of these are to be done with the idea that there's a fiscal and service delivery sustainability is kind of critical. And again, all of these, meeting these kind of core principles with sustainability being the foundation to it all is kind of the basis for moving forward. And I think this is kind of the working agreed concept, if we were to go into that discussion on contracts and how to resource, allocate those resources, that we would try to achieve. And that will mean, which I don't think anybody will think otherwise, that will mean that we will have to reallocate resources from one part to another because the current allocation, or the current resource structure doesn't work to provide and ensure that level of service throughout. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to you. Kind of what we're looking for in direction is what you would like us to prepare for the budget process, for the funding model, how you, kind of your thinking on resource allocation, and then contracts moving forward. And then from that, later, at a later date I'm sure, we will determine what the Weddington, Providence path is.
I'll tell you the same thing we did when we talked offline the other day. I think you put the cart before the horse again. It's kind of like me going to Frank and saying, I'm going to build a house, I need $300,000. And he's going to ask me, where's your plans? I don't have a plan. You know, we don't have a contract, and you've got 18 individual entities that we've got to negotiate a contract with. And so, you know, these individual, most of these fire departments have been servicing this county for over 50 years. And so we've got to negotiate with them. I agree that our contract is antiquated. It's basically go forth and fight fires. And we need something with some matrix, but we need to identify that so they know what, know what to expect when they come with their budget model, what to expect. Kind of like you're, you told me that the fire earlier, that fire fee districts, if we did a tax, it would bring in less money, considerably less money, is what you told me in the past. Off a basis, and I think you were talking four cent instead of three, you used an example. Well, if you do that, I think there's only two fire districts, Weddington and Wesley Chapel, that are under four cents. So, you know, that example you gave with Henry Bridge with three cents, he's going to have three cents and then he's going to have two and a half, the town's going to prove before that, you're going to fund him less to fund the rest, and we now have to know what that exposure is. And I totally agree. EMS is totally a different animal. They were one vendor, and basically they're, we own them, we just got somebody running it for us. We need to get this community involvement, which you mentioned earlier, that helped design this approach. And I agree, we need to have funding changes. But, and I had no problem with that. I think we talked 2016, July 1st, 2016, fine. But let's get our community involvement, and let's design what we're going to do. And then we'll know how much money we're going to have to assess for that particular thing. Because I think after you, right now law says that in Wesley Chapel, money has to be used where they raise it. But with this fire fee, will that eliminate that?
Do you have the countywide fire tax, general tax?
Then it's your decision where it goes, right?
It's your decision where it goes.
Well, I mean, you know what I'm saying, but...
Cindy, I make recommendations?
I understand. It'd be, it's your job to do a recommendation to the three.
It is absolutely our job, which doesn't change in both ways, either this model or that model.
Oh, I just, you know, my personal recommendation is, is that we gather the input from the players that have, most of them have over 50 years' experience of what the exec... Because you know, yeah, you identify that you've got equipment needs, you've got staffing needs. They need a model. So next year, when they're planning, what are you, are you going to get, can you going to get three people? Are you going to get one person? What are we going to do? What is our basic staffing going to do? Because they are independent.
So are you suggesting that we freeze at this year's level, until we get to that discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I'm trying to understand for...
And then, and then solicit the community involvement. EMS, we had six weeks. And I'll tell you what, our community stepped up and helped us identify that. Here we've got probably six to nine months, we can do that before the next budget cycle, and run it out in 2016. And I almost interrupted you when you talked about them checking a list before they go out and respond to fire. Curtis, I don't think they do that before they dispatch a fire department.
That was an example out of Tennessee.
I know. That's not Tennessee. I've never seen our fire departments decline service to our citizens. And they would be commended for that. But we need to get their input and come out with a model. And because, you know, you may not be, you may moved on to CFO of New York City in a couple of years.
Not like that.
He doesn't want to tie for that.
But what I'm saying is that it's got to be sustainable, and it's got to be a process that we can depend going forth, because you may not be the one that's making the recommendation.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Riff?
You know, I've had huge fire departments. In my grandparents' house in Stanley County, when I got out of college, I was staying with them. And their house burned down, and five fire departments responded to that call. And, you know, when you don't have anything, your house is burned down, and the Red Cross comes and gives you a hundred dollars for clothes, and you start to really understand what these people mean to the community. And, you know, a lot of the people in the community support their firefighters and have for years through efforts of fundraisers, barbecues. I know I've ate a lot of Wesley Chapel barbecue, and I don't even live down there. But I drive through there once in a while, and if I'm in a wreck, I want them to peel me out of the car. I'm a big boy to peel out of a car. One thing, the things that we've talked about and seen, the one that appeals to me the most is the hybrid model. And I know that that's not probably the one that would be most supported by, maybe by staff. But, you know, when these, when these districts go out and petition that they want a higher level of service, that is basically the community has said, we want more. We deserve more, we will pay for more. And so if we've got 18 different districts, if we did the hybrid model where we did a base level of service provided by the county taxpayers, and then those fire departments that want a higher level of service, if those citizens in that district petitioned for more, then I don't have a problem with them doing that. They could do it for other things. So Commissioner, Chairman Hammond's right. We have to have a plan, we have to have, we have to have input from the fire departments. And I think you have got some input. I mean, the fire fee districts want something, they need something better. And, you know, I just don't think that we have to take away the added services that the fire tax districts have, especially when their people are happy with that, with that service and that extra level of service. And this even goes to the Weddington concern. If they, if they, if the petition, they petitioned there to get a higher level of service and the citizens there are willing to pay for it, then who am I to tell them that they shouldn't deserve, they don't deserve that? And it's not really a have or have not issue, the have is if we have that basic level of service. But in the past, we let Weddington Town Council buy an ambulance for, and it was stationed down Wesley Chapel Fire Department in Newtown. And it was a no-brainer. Heck, yeah. Another ambulance in the county, please? And they were happy to provide it, we were happy to take it. So providing that base level of funding, what we determined it to be, or you determined it to be, and we figured that out. We get a contract with these fire departments, we do get them agreeing that that's what... Let me ask you a question. If they go out and business, I mean, who owns the fire department? 501(c)(3) owns it, but...
The women in the building, the, we would have to work through who would service that area. And there's options, you know, you could go through county service, which I'm not suggesting. But yeah, I mean, it just depends on if they were to go out, what the disposition of the building is. We don't incur the debt for the building, and we don't own the equipment. But the right to serve or the ability to serve is based on the music commission, and the funding is based on music commission. So the funding doesn't go away if that voluntary fire department goes away. You still would have the pot of money, whatever structure you've established to provide that service.
The majority of the districts have debt either on their equipment or their buildings. So without a contract with the county, I don't know that they have a way to pay that associated debt.
They would probably get the facility in.
One problem would be, as I can see in you saying that, would be a fire department who's grown tremendously, has a lot of debt, versus a fire department who's pretty much stayed within their means or stayed in a certain position for a long time and done without. Or, you know, would everybody, would that still be a shift? Because there is a concern of a shift of money, which I don't have that concern because where I live, we pay tax dollars for schools that we don't, for nice new, beautiful schools that we don't go to. I have no problem with that, because I'm a county taxpayer, I understand that this is county system. We've got a nice school, we have good education, and I'm happy for it. But my fire department down the road is one of the ones that you're talking about, there's an area of concern. So if my neighbor's house catches on fire, and they get there to put it out before it burns my house down, I am grateful. If they get there and rescue my child from a wrecked car, I'm grateful. I've got a 16-year-old, we don't have to worry about that kind of stuff. It's not just homes burning down, it's wrecks, it's other things. And I told you the other day, I'm in favor of lumping that together with EMS, that if we're going to show that what these fire and rescue services are costing the taxpayer, I'm in favor of breaking that out and distinguishing that from other services that the county provides. I think you said there would be a benefit to breaking out of a fire, the fire funding and the tax. And the EMS along with that, so we do have to do something. And firefighters, I was on the fire commission floor, I know it's hard, I know it's confusing, but we have to do something. And we have to get something figured out right away. Because we can't afford to let people perish and a car crash because we can't get somebody there to help.
So you're suggesting...
I like the hybrid.
The hybrid. Okay.
If, let's say my fire department, let's say that we feel like we're, we want a new truck. If the neighborhood, neighbors get together and petition the county commissioners and say, we would like to add another two pennies or three pennies or whatever our tax rate to accommodate this new fire structure, because we want to be safe, I feel like we should be able to do that.
Questions, comments?
Jeff, again, I just, I think, I think we need to work toward the new funding, but I don't think we have enough information to give you direction to go which model to go right now.
We've discussed, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
We've discussed, I think we need a baseline first. If we're going to establish some type of funding for the county, then there at least needs to be that base level of service. And to Vice Chair Rushing's point, if they want to buy more, they get more. But there is that ability for the resident to make that determination, whether it's, you know, where they live in the county and personal preference. And so I think we need that flexibility. But I really, I'm really struggling with saying, okay, here's our funding now, here's our method of funding, without at least understanding or having something down that says, here's what we expect for this funding. Here's a base level of service that every resident in the county, regardless of where you live, you can expect this service for this fee or this tax. And then if they want to go above and beyond that, then they're good. But I'd like to see at least a baseline level of service established before we go forward.
Well, I think you do, because there are remaining to be volunteer fire departments, and they've gone through accreditation recently, there is a base level of service that is out there to a large degree, not a base level of service across the county that everybody is apples to apples to apples. So, let me see if I can be sure what I'm hearing though. Because I think under the status quo model, if you're suggesting we go status quo for another year, which is what it sounds like, then what we need is a little bit of direction on, do we freeze the funding at this, at the level it is for 2015 because of that resource allocation decision process and not having those contracts in place? Because it's a chicken and egg. I mean, I think the funding can go first. You have a different opinion, that's fine. You get to make the decision. That's the good thing about sitting where you are, is... So would you suggest then that we freeze that until we establish the remainder of that equation? And then next year come back, and if it's the hybrid model, come back with what the hybrid model has to look like? Is that, trying to kind of get to a directional point for us?
If we weren't to freeze funding, I would say we limit it to the growth that the county is expecting overall as a whole, whether it's that 1% growth. And that way it's, we know exactly what that growth is, everybody understands that that's the growth. Until we put a funding mechanism in place, that's the growth that can be expected long-term. And then that kind of gets us in that right direction going for 2016 to say, we know that if we don't do anything, you're tied to the growth in the county of 1% a year. We need to do something if we're going to look long-term.
Do we have a consensus? I'm just trying to make sure we have consensus so we don't go off and spend a lot of time and come back and y'all say, did you follow and hit your heads?
Vice Chair Rushing?
I do think, if we're going to, if we're going to implement it next year, I still think we need to make the decision on which way to go. And because like she said, if they put, if they put all this time and effort into it only for us to change our mind next year, and, you know, I think, I think we have to give some direction. Maybe not tonight, but soon, on what we want to see. And if, you know, because again, if we come up next year and we've been, you know, we've been torn in every which direction by every different group, I think, I think people understand we're in a pickle. I think, I bet, I think people understand that we're in trouble here. And if we don't do something, you know, if, I would hate to lose my fire department because they couldn't get enough money. I understand that y'all want to fund them, and I understand that y'all want to keep the doors open. If we're going to do it anyways and do it through the tax rate, we may as well get credit for doing it through the tax rate and show people what the true cost of that service is. I hope, you know, again, if the fire departments are listening, I know for behalf of them, one thing, that's again, why I like the hybrid, because you, you know, you do give them the opportunity that they want a higher level of service, that people can petition for it, which, you know, to have already done that. The tax rate that goes on with it, like when they get their sales tax allocation out of that, every time that we do that, every time that we would do, let's say that we had 18 departments saying, we need a little bit more money. So let's say we had the people petition, all those 18 districts come back. So let's say we had the people petition, all those eighteen districts come back. We would back that allocation that they're gonna get out of sales tax with that, or they would get that in addition too?
What I would, what I would recommend you, you do is, is establish the rates in conjunction with the sales tax revenue sufficient to cover. Because there's a fine balance. And then the reason why Commissioner I suggest that your county staff in conjunction with the VFD set the resource allocation model is that the folks that are receiving the resources, you have, in that process, you really only have one set of unbiased, objective folks. So that, you know, what we hear from the VFD in that case is we want our sales tax and our tax rate and be able to spend. Because we already have the questions come. We want our dollar value so we can build our budget up to our dollar value. Not, tell us what you need and we'll ensure the dollars are there sufficient to meet your needs. And what I, what I would suggest to you is that, as your county staff, that's what we do. And with the addition of Curtis on our staff, we've, we have depth and experience in this area to be able to make objective recommendations. And may, not everyone's gonna get what they want, absolutely. There's winners and losers always. But no different than pushing sheriff's needs against human resources and human services needs. We make those value judgment recommendations based on the entire county versus the individual fire districts are really more concerned, and this is not to be a slight to them because that's what you expect them to be. But they're really more concerned with ensuring that they get their smaller piece, whereas you as a commission and us as staff are responsible to ensure the county service throughout the entire county. So yeah, what we would do is, what I would recommend is we would look at their needs as a VFD, recommend back to you, which is the system we use now, what the funding level should be, whether that's sales tax or tax dollars, but a total dollar value based on the level of service that you asked us to provide as a county-wide level of service and we're contracted with them to provide. And then that recommendation will come back to you as, as a board. And if you do the county-wide tax, then that sales tax component becomes less consequential because it's, you're no longer in the box and haven't allocated. If you do eighteen different tax districts, it will have an impact on the sales tax dollars received by the county to fund that service. So there's a little bit, there's secondary impacts of that. But in answer to your question, we would try to do a set, set the rate in conjunction with the sales tax such that it's a sufficient funding level for that VFD's needs. Now, they may not always agree needs versus wants, but we, that's, we have that discussion this time of year with every person that comes through the door, whether it's Dr. Seedorf, SBCC, Mike Lutz of EMS, Dr. Webb and Dr. Ellis from the school system.
Sheriff Kathy.
Sheriff Kathy, and we, we had a two hour meeting with...
Actually, it was closer to three.
Three, three hour meeting with his staff. And at the end, we just said, you know, we can't fund everything you've asked for. You're gonna need to roll it back and tell us what your priorities are. So I think the system we have built through the zero-based process and the education process and the discussion we go through really does get to the needs of the individual units in conjunction with the needs of the total county as a system. So that's why I recommend, I feel perfectly comfortable recommending the process we talked about. But that's a long-winded answer to your question. But I think that we would have to do some, there would have to be on our side still value judgment regardless. At the end of the day, as to what the county rate rate would be, what the hybrid model rates would be, you would, we would have to do that on the county-wide level. And I don't think Cindy can advocate that responsibility as the county's budget officer.
Well, the way I understand it is like if, if a fire, Stallings or Hemmy Bridge come to you still right now and ask
They do.
For approval of their budget, right?
They do, absolutely.
And we, and we could set their rate at one cent, two cent, three cent, twenty cent. No, fifteen, fifteen's our limit?
If we come to you and recommend that they've asked for this, this is what we are recommending, that can be supported by X tax rate, then that's up to the Board of County Commissioners if you concur with that recommendation or not.
So if our county-wide tax rate is three cent, three and a half cent, four cent, whatever it would be, if Hemmy Bridge came and again, they, since they had a petition from their residents to have a higher service, we could give them two additional cents, three, whatever it would get to, to be where they want to be, correct? How do you point?
Jeff, remind me to remind you at this point...
I was gonna thank you because that's where I was going.
It's the petition process that was done in nineteen eighty-four was not a, we want a higher level of service than what's provided by the county. It was a petition to say, we are okay with funding our fire service through this mechanism. That level of service, when they vote, they didn't vote for a level of service for VFD, for Board of Directors, for any of those things. What they voted was to authorize you as a commission to set a tax rate to provide fire service in that area. The level, the tax, the who, the how, all that stuff is up to you as a commission. So yes, in answer to your questions, if they came and said, we wanted to, the VFD wanted to fund a higher level through their tax rate, you as the Board of County Commissioners, as the, as the single representative of the taxpayer in that discussion, can make a determination that you want the Hemmy Bridge folks to have a higher level of service. Or you can say no, or you could take somewhere in the middle, which is probably where we would be as staff and recommend, we think that this is a good, you know, this is an appropriate level or this is not an appropriate level.
So what, and what I'm getting at is if, if there was a feeling from the community that, that we were not providing enough money for, our staff did not recommend that we did not provide enough money, they could petition, you know, they could petition or ask the county commissioners to increase that, increase say, or to levy a tax for that district of one cent, two cent, three cent, whatever. They could ask that.
We do have at least one public hearing associated with your budget in the last couple of years, actually, I think we conducted two.
Three.
Three.
Three, oh, that's right.
But that is the hybrid model that we're talking about.
And that, you, we would never, we would not eliminate the tax district. So if, let's say you, you told us to go, we just set the rate to zero. Like you may, you may be surprised, you still have a mineral school district tax. It's just zero. So you could set that rate to zero, then decide after that, after a year, that there needs to be premium service at Hemby, for instance. So that rate could go up to a penny. There's variations on it. But once, once you go to zero, then that money moves freely across the entire county. As long as that tax rate's charged in that, under that model, that has to stay in those five tax districts specifically. And that comes into play when you're talking about Weddington and Providence and how you handle that situation as to how you're going to fund across service lines and so forth. So, but yeah, you would always have that flexibility because I don't think we would recommend you take it off the books. I'm not even sure how you undo that and then just set the rate at zero.
That, that's what I like about the hybrid model is it allows that flexibility for each department to be more responsive to their particular group of residents. So if they do want a higher level of service, they do have that flexibility. Where if we go just to county-wide standard, it, it puts everybody on the same level, which may not be better for one versus another. But at least the hybrid gives you that flexibility so they can be responsive.
Well, I'm thinking of the hybrid, and the hybrid came out of meetings with the VFDs and the tax districts. It wasn't an option last year.
We had these discussions last year with a lot of the, all of the VFDs. And we in essence said, we're not advocating a position. We haven't even been directed by the Board of County Commissioners, but we have a problem. We're trying to come up with solution sets. And those that were fire fee-based, I mean, they're looking for any type of an answer. Those that are, the taxing districts came back and had the issue with taking their tax rates down to zero and having the same basic level of service as the rest of the community. And so we came up with a hybrid as a means to try to find a compromise.
At the end of the day, regardless of what happens this year, it's not sustainable. And by 2016, something has to be put in place, correct?
And, well, your commitment is to continue growing the general fund. So if you want to try to, as we look back on projections report, the three big drivers you had in your operating, in the projections this year was EMS, VFDs, and SBCC as being your big, kind of your big issues. We think we can control the growth on the county side of that equation, but those are factors beyond our control as far as the service delivery. So if the further you push it down, that, that problem's just gonna continue to grow. I can tell you in a reval year where we're at right now is if we're gonna go status quo, we're probably gonna have to end up freezing that funding because the request is at such a level that without another funding mechanism, then there's not a means to cover those needs. So we're kind of finally hitting that wall that we've all said is coming. And whether it's now or next year, it's just a matter of degrees at that point of, of where you're gonna end up. So...
Well, that's my concern in all, in all of these discussions. We talked about the, the tax increase for the reval revenue neutral. We talked about the tax increase for fire departments. We talked about the tax increase for the bonds. I mean, it's tax increase, tax increase, tax increase. And yeah, once we hit eighty-four cents, now we're, we would be higher than in Charlotte. So economic development could be...
But I think the swap, the thing to keep in mind is the swap you're making is a fire fee. You're taking the fire fee away. So the homeowner will not be, again, if you have to go over that $250,000 mark really to have an impact at homeowner. And, and looking at the median home values based on the current reval, I think John mentioned this in the newspaper article, it's right around that 235. So the median price in the county, it's gonna be a swap. It's really gonna net. And that, you know, up or down, when we evaluated the farmers, some of the agricultural community begged a little, it was somewhat up, somewhat down. It wasn't, nobody was extreme. It wasn't, you know, $15,000 difference. So what we tried to do, and, and one of the reasons why I was suggesting funding ahead of the, the discussion is because we can set it at a level that's of your expectation of a level that you don't feel like will impact, that we don't believe will impact economic development and so forth. And then we know the box we're working within. And how long it takes us to get to that service standard then can be determined by the level of funding. Because the kind of the way, the challenge we're having right now with our EMS contract is we've set the standards and now we've got a price tag, and that price tag is, is such a high, you know, it's really high. So we're having to work with, with EMS folks to try to pare back their requests without impacting the expectation of services because we did the service side ahead of the budget side. So I think if you establish the funding, you know the box or the sandbox you're playing in. And then as we build those contracts, we can say, this is a three-year plan, this is a five-year plan, or this is our standard, our horizon achieving the standards we're asking you for because we know what our resources are gonna be. Versus saying, we want you to achieve it, now tell us what that's gonna cost. And that cost's gonna be at a level that you may be shocked. So that's kind of the, you know, it is a chicken and egg argument. But I always, he who controls the power is first, has the, has the, you know, kind of has the limitation on that. And you as a board control that. And I think it gives you a negotiating position to your contracts to ensure those, those standards you want met are met. So that's just, that's my main, my thinking on it, the reason why we recommended it this way.
You said there was a benefit. Is there a monetary benefit to splitting it off and not just saying, okay, we're paying it out of the general fund, now we're saying we're actually paying for fire EMS service? What's the monetary benefit? What's the...
I don't think there's a monetary benefit, but I have to see it as a transparency issue. Because when you see your general county tax rates, and if we were to recommend them going up, we recommend a revenue neutral rate, the growth in that rate, depending upon what we fund, in the last couple of years has gone to schools and public safety, not in administration or, you know, those other areas that everybody thinks of, traditional government costs. That's not, that is not what is driving our county right now from a cost perspective. Our administration is very tight, very, we beat our administration up consistently on their budget. And I think that Cindy's made that promise and I share the same thinking is we'll bring our, we'll bring the county stuff that we control in under budget, one way or the other. But it's the externals to us, the SBCCs, the VFDs, the EMSs, that I, that we don't control to, to work them into the box to be able to fit in the funding model. So breaking them out, what that allows you to do is to be able to say, you know what? We're gonna be real clear with our residents in the budget process, that this is where your dollars are going. So when they see that tax increase or they see an increase on their bill, they know it's not to go to fund the county manager, to go to fund administrative offices and, and they go growing the administrative side. They're seeing that that is actually going to fund directly frontline public safety services. And frontline services from a education perspective and those things. So the value I see in it is increased transparency from the taxpayer. Because if I, as a taxpayer, and I'm a resident of Union County, I pay Mineral Springs and I pay my county tax, I appreciate that we work hard to keep the administrative side down and we're not growing the administrative side of government. But there's also, you know, there's a cost for us on the service side. And I think that that's where your benefit is from, from breaking them out. So can I answer your question?
I still have trouble understanding how you're gonna build a box, as you call it, and then go out to eighteen different departments, say, all right, how you gonna fit in the box? And having the baseline, as you call it. If you don't have that, how can, how can you build a box?
Well, I think you have a baseline now because they're all accredited. So you have a, a certain level. I think what you're looking for is how do you take where we are now and go to the future to do the equipment, to do personnel, staffing and facilities in such a way that we create that continued base level of service? Because if you were to look back at the staffing plan and the fire study and the equipment Horizon needs study, there's more coming. And I think what you have to do is determine, I think right now you have some form of base because they're all accredited. But moving forward and how you roll out those different pieces and who gets all those different pieces, that's, that's the discussion. I think if you're looking at it like going out to eighteen VFDs and establishing eighteen different levels, what I'm suggesting is we establish a fairly uniform contract with the VFDs on a base level so that when you're in Hemmy Bridge, since Johnny's here, you know Hemmy has this least base level service. And that's what your three cents buys you. And when you're out at Griffith Road or Beaver, Beaver Lane, whatever, wherever you are, that three cent has bought you a base level, whether that's the accreditation level, it's, I think you're looking at Standard 20 or one of the different NFPA standards. We know that's there. And how we go forward and allocate the resources to keep that standard level up to that level, to that level, becomes the discussion. But I think you do have, you have a fairly well-set out standard from the NFPA as to what you should have and what the state accreditation requirements are. So building, how you keep everybody in that lockstep with their equipment and everything else is kind of the discussion and how you go from here into the future. I'm not suggesting any of our fire departments are broken from a service perspective, a couple are probation. But my understanding that we, they've added resources to try to take care of that issue. But I think from here to the future, your funding model's broken and how you're gonna continue to provide that base level is gonna be the challenge. So is that kind of, I think you do have a base. You already have a box to work with it. I think it's just establishing how you move forward through those contracts is really the best.
Is that a three cent base or is that a four cent box or six cent box? Because you've got only, I believe only one department that's got tax rate less than three, three cents. And you've got fifteen fire districts that you and I had the conversation that if you converted to a fire tax, they would deliver considerably less revenue. So I guess Wesley Chapel's gonna support everything with a three cent. I don't understand the math.
Well, and that was last year. So once we come up with the total budget, the total this year for, on a recommendation, we'll make the recommendation as to what that penny value has to be based on a thorough analysis of their, of all the requests. But I think what you're referring to is if you kept, when I talk about individual fire districts, the fifteen fire districts, if you kept that bucket right there with them, you're absolutely right. They don't have enough, have more value to fund their service. But when you take the county as a whole, there is a redistributive nature to this process. And that's just like, just like police, or sheriff's protection and EMS and any other public safety we have. The more densely populated, higher value area will pay to help offset the cost for the more rural, less densely populated areas. That's the nature of it. But we have to have a mechanism to redistribute some of that, and based on need. So if there's apparatus replaced on one part of the county and couldn't afford to replace it before, it doesn't mean that they're gonna get new apparatus every year. It just means based on need to bring one part of the county up to a certain level, then we may have to take resources from one part and move it across. And that's, that's kind of the nature of, of government service as a whole. And that's that great as a service.
Just as a school, like we may pay a higher rate, pay a bond down on a new school that we don't go to.
That's right.
So it's back and forth. It's, it's, you know, it doesn't sound fair, but it didn't sound fair to the people who said, we don't want to bond for, pay for a bond for the western part of the county or water or sewer or anything else, you know, where some, you know, where you have your high resources and you're gonna have more money available. And, and it's just like EMS, you know, we, we don't have as many calls probably, but, you know, we're getting a service, we're getting a vehicle down in our area that'll help, help it because we're in the rural area. And so, so I, I understand what you're talking about for that.
Where I'm struggling is, I think to Chairman's point, you're, you're talking about establishing a, a funding mechanism at, let's say, three cents. And then everybody has to fit within that three cents. So I'm fine with you bringing... So I'm fine with you bringing the level up, but if you start bringing the level down, there's, there's going to be concern with the residents that occupy those districts. And so that's why I think we need to establish that baseline first and see, and it could be like EMS, we establish that base and we say, wow, we, we just can't afford it. So then all the departments get together and come up with something that is affordable. But we don't know until we at least try and establish that. Because if you're trying, if you're trying to establish, if you're just working, saying, well, I've got this much money we've got to work up, I, I get that. But I don't want to see anybody's service go down. I'd love to see everybody's service improve. But I think we just need to have a baseline to find out what is acceptable first. Because that, that line from here up to what's acceptable may be very small.
Sure.
And, but we don't know that until we figure out what that baseline is.
I think what you'd see more than anybody coming down, is you'd see kind of a holding pattern for those that already have a high, high level of service, while the rest, while everybody else wants a larger one, to level that field. I, I'm with you. I couldn't see pulling someone down, listen, you never pull, you never get anybody moved up by pulling someone else down. That's just the reality. So I would see kind of an equalization to the high, you know, not necessarily the highest level, but to that base level. So they would still be above the base level, but you'd have brought everybody else up to that just slightly below or, or to what that base level would be.
And that's why I go back to the hybrid model, that gives you that flexibility.
Absolutely. It sure does.
And Jeff, I don't have any problem with saying, let's go to the hybrid model. But not till we know what the baseline's going to be, what it's going to cost. Because you're hitting, in this group you're talking about, probably 70% of the population in Union County are potentially seeing the degradation in service. So we need to understand that before we go a whole lot further.
Well, again, I don't think you'd see a degradation in services at all. I think what you would see is they provide the same service where they're at, without expansion necessarily. And then the other is that they're seeing deficient service or deficient equipment and everything else come up to that. So I don't, I hesitate to characterize it as a degradation in service.
So until we know that baseline, I don't, I don't think we know.
You say you don't like we have a baseline?
I don't think we have a baseline.
I disagree.
Okay.
I'm just looking for consensus.
Thank you, Jerry. How you feel about hybrid?
Well, I don't know whether I'd agree with Frank. I think we haven't, we haven't come this far and been doing this this long, we don't have some understanding of what the baseline of the services is. I think intelligent minds of that fire service that we have on staff and throughout the volunteer fire departments can quickly come to a consensus of what that baseline service is. I said five years ago, when I first got introduced to this issue, that, that we were a county in transition. And certainly expectations in the, on the western side of the county are different from those in the east. So probably eventually, and I think I heard Jeff say something about this problem would eventually take care of itself, but eventually we may go to a county wide funding mechanism. But I'm not sure what, we're not at a point currently where differences in, you know, in communities countywide that we, like Lance has mentioned, we don't need to have a little flexibility in there for, for service needs, or, or service desire, so to speak. Probably didn't answer the question.
I can weave an answer through that, but I don't want to put any words in your mouth.
Frank, how you doing?
Well, I, you know, I, I go back to, I, I do believe we have a baseline. I think to Jerry's point, you know, we've been doing this long enough, we know. And we have some exceptional firefighters here in the county. And I sort of think they know. And I think, you know, we've heard repeatedly, there's not going to be a reduction in service. I don't think that's anyone's intention, and certainly not anybody on this board's intention, and not staff's. You know, I guess my concern is, you know, we're, we're an elected body to make these decisions. And, you know, I, I think what I, finding the trend to be is we just want to keep kicking everything down the road, and I don't think that's the right. I don't think that's what any of us signed up for when we ran for office and ultimately ended up on this board. You know, Commissioner Hammonds, you made a comment earlier, you know, if you were going to build a house, you'd come to me and I'd ask you for the plans. Well, the first thing I would do is ask you what you can afford and tell you what you can afford before I would ask for your plans. Because, you know, it, you can have a plan all day long, but if you can't afford it, it doesn't really do you any good. And so I think what I'm hearing the staff say is, and I agree, is we need to come up with what we can afford. We need to take the items that have been submitted by our fire departments, and we need to determine what we can afford. And if we can afford everything, great. If we can't, then let's figure out what we can afford, how we can make this more equitable. We have a huge disparity across this county with our fire tax, our fire fees. And, I mean, we, we can look at these, these charts and listen to conversations and see that what we have is not sustainable. And I personally think that the hybrid is, is a way to address the, the situation we found ourselves in. You know, it's not a cookie cutter answer. It's a way to come up with, based on real life needs, let each fire department come up with their own solutions, if you will. But at the same time, have the underlying budgetary restraints that everybody would eventually end up on the same playing field. You know, we're not going to see a lot of growth right now, but that's, again, because we have such disparity across Union County. So I think, you know, if we can get everybody on the same playing field, then we're, we're, we'll be better off in the future. And I believe the hybrid model is the way to do that.
Will you restate what you're asking for consensus on?
Well, we, we have four options that we presented to you. Actually, we've only really presented you two options of it, because we've told you we don't think the status quo is sustainable. We have told you that the, what are we referring to? The municipal districts, I did refer to them. The individual fire service districts is, is not affordable in a lot of areas of our community. When we look at some of our less densely populated, that their rate could be anywhere from 15, 30, 40 cents. I, I don't think that there's any equity there. So it's, you know, and obviously the board wants to do status quo. We, we take direction from the board, but we're really asking, between the two options that we believe are viable is either the hybrid or the general tax. And then from that, we would present a budget recommendation to you. We would then proceed forward, should you agree with the budget recommendation and the funding. We would then, the subsequent year, start negotiating those contracts with the VFDs.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more statement. You know, I'll tell you this, anybody watching or firefighter, Chairman Hammonds has been completely passionate about this issue, and he's worked very hard, he spends a lot of hours on this, and that's part of the concern. I, I hear the concerns, and I understand what, what he's saying, and you don't want to mess this up. Dad probably don't want to mess this up. But I think that's kind of what the hybrid model will let us do. It'll let you as a staff work through this for a year, with the intention that some fire departments are going to be, have a higher funding because they, they petitioned for it. But at the end of the day, if, once we see if the, if the countywide works, we can always, in the future, start working that hybrid down. Or we can ramp it up. We can, that gives us the most flexibility. And, and again, you know, there, there's, and I think we need complete consensus on this because the firefighters deserve it. We need to all agree and do this as a 5-0, because this is something that the firefighters desperately need, and our community needs to know for stability. And I think we do a lot of things 5-0, and I, I think this one needs to be that way. I think we need to give some direction to, to the hybrids, the way we want to go.
I would say, I don't have any problem with the hybrid implementation time and understanding the tax rate that you're looking at, and how it's going to be allocated, because I know that Weddington has unique issues, Hemmy Bridge, and, and, you know, if you go down to New Salem, they, they're all unique. And, you know, I'd like to understand better how we are going to ensure that we meet the requirements on the long term.
What I envision with that hybrid would be that if Weddington said that we, the county's going to provide a base of, let's say, two people at that fire department, or we're going to provide the funding for two people to be at that fire department all the time. And the town of Weddington said, well, you know, we like that, but we want three people. They could always fund that through their town, or, or any town could do that and step up and do it. Or they could petition and ask for that extra, extra tax to be added on. Maybe that's what the hybrid would give us. You know, I, I do, I do think that, you know, if a community wants a better service, then there's, there's ways for them to get it, especially with the hybrid.
So let me see if I can kind of encapsulate the discussion. Hearing, there, consensus probably around the hybrid version. The concern being how we get from today to the future as far as how those resources are allocated and what that standard is, the contract aspect of it. I consider that all contract works. So here's, here's kind of how I understand what you're saying, is moving to the hybrid model, then without significant change to how we allocate this year, but in the next year, spending that time to get the contracts worked out with the VFDs and that standard level service and the long-term plan in place, but with the funding model in place to be able to do that, is that, I know that's not exactly where you were at, probably not exactly where you were at either, but that's kind of what I've heard from, and I'm just kind of trying to recapture the conversation, so we, I know we have other stuff to do tonight. Because we do need to move on in the budget process, deciding how we're going to do it, make the recommendation, as well as if we, if the directions to Curtis and myself and Jeff and Cindy to go negotiate those contracts, laying out a timeframe and kind of the program to do that. Which I'm not hearing any objection to contracts, service level, those things. I think it's just the process and how we get there. So.
Are you going, aren't you going to bring that back to us for about an open session?
You'll get, what, what we would do is probably structure this year around the hybrid model under the current budget structure, such that we would continue our process, we'd make that recommendation. You would see the pennies, obviously, because you have to adopt. But then, as we go to that next year, as we go through 2016, getting the contracts in place, and whatever changes have to occur in that process, then that would establish, then, a long-term plan for going forward. So it'd be a two-step move to the final version. Your first step would be the tax, get the structure set up and the rules around how we fund it. And that way, then, helps us solve the lighting to providence issue, we come back with a recommendation. Then we would go through a long, longer-term planning horizon with the VFDs, relook at the fire study, relook at their needs going forward on a long-term basis for our staffing and equipment, and then bring back a long-term, how we get there using that hybrid model as the funding. Because now we'll know the box that we're working within to be able to achieve that. So I think that we can get to where you're wanting to go as a commission in that two-step process. I don't think all in fails super waiting to do it. I don't know if that gains you a whole lot, but I think we can do the, since you mentioned, even breaking it out of the tax bill, I would recommend if we do it, the hybrid model, that we absolutely would break it out of the tax bill, and everybody see it, set it up into a separate fund, just like schools. So, you know, it's not, it's not on the backs of your general operations that those tax rates are being set. It's just, it's a transparency issue for the public. So is that kind of?
For example, you would have Union County fire tax, Union County tax, Union County fire tax, Hemmy Bridge additional tax.
Right.
Fire, and then you would have schools.
Yep.
Schools.
Just like that.
Would the tax, and I agree with the hybrid model, majority of what you just said, would the tax be affected July 1st, 2015? Or would you plan on implementing that tax starting July 1st, 2016?
Based on what I'm hearing is, I think we'd put it in our budget for 2015, 16. So it'd be in the budget you're going to have out there in about eight weeks.
But your funding methodology, you would be?
The funding methodology built in. Then the funding levels for the VFDs would be based on the current process we do, but then over the next year for the 16, 17 budget, we would redo the contracts, and then from that redo of the contracts, the balance of what can be afforded versus what the long-term plan is will be brought into focus. Because what you will have done with is, you will have told us what you can afford, what you as a commission can support as a tax rate, and we will work the service level, ensuring, you know, that all the things that everybody needs, what they have to have the basis, and not bring any one down, or if they need supplemental tax on top of that, those tax districts. We would balance the 16, 17 with the long-term plan and what that needs to be. But you will have given us the signal based on the recommendation from this year, what your acceptable level of funding is, to be able to work with as we establish those parameters. And maybe the contract calls for a base level service, but it may take us three years to build up the staffing and equipment conversion over the horizon versus saying, now let's, we need to do it all at one time, and here's the price tag, that's 10 cents, that's just not going to work.
And I think you were just saying, was you, we would work within the current funding structure this year, assuming the hybrid model's being rolled out, and then as you work between July 1st, this year forward, that's when you put the contracts in place and get everything finalized, so that the true hybrid model with any corresponding tax rate would go into effect next year.
And, and not to speak for Jeff, but I think what he was talking about, the funding model, is we have met with all but three of the VFDs. We have gone through all of their budget requests. I mean, I have everything from some who their bunker is outside of the 10-year horizon. Obviously, that is something we absolutely have to fund. I have some who have building issues, I have some who have engines that are 30 years old that probably should have been replaced 10 years ago. So, I mean, we're going through that process, and we have a pretty good idea as to where the needs are within our VFDs. And I think we have to take that, develop a, and we had intended, unless the board directs us otherwise, develop a tax rate for this upcoming fiscal year. And then that becomes the basis that we then in subsequent years do the resource allocation. We know within the confines within we work, which we work.
I'm a little concerned when you mentioned the three cents earlier, and then we started talking about the revow. You're potentially looking at another seven, eight cent increase?
No, what, what we're talking about, that's based on last year. So when we get our new, our revow tax rate, so revenue neutral, could be as much as two pennies. Okay? But what we've tried to do probably on the hybrid version, is try to bring it in below what the average homeowner would pay. So that while their tax rate, technically, yes, they would pay a higher tax rate, their total tax bill, which is a concept I want to jump on in my next presentation in two weeks, but the concept of revenue neutral is that their total tax bill doesn't really change. So for the average homeowner in Union County that's in a fee district, we'll see their, their bill go down because that 100, you know, that, even at that $250 level, or $250,000 level, that's not our average homeowners. The most, the average value of a house is well below that. So most folks will see that decrease in that fire fee.
But they'll see the largest increase in the revow, in the revenue neutral way?
They shouldn't.
Because the, the, the decrease in values occurred on the western side of the county, not the east?
Those folks will see a little bit of an increase. So it may offset, but I haven't gone through that level of analysis yet with revow, because I think they just finished the numbers last week when they sent the notices out. So in theory, the process of revenue neutral across the entire county, because no one's average, is that everybody below the average is unharmed, everybody above the average experiences some change. So what we would try to do, I think, and unless Cindy thinks otherwise, try to fit it into the box of their current funding structure, and within reason as to the amount of money. That's why I mentioned, if you want to go status quo and wait a year, then we really need to freeze funding where it's at. Because otherwise, you're going to be cycling off big chunks of your general fund and try to meet those needs because you can't move the money. So the benefit of the plan, of going to a hybrid early on, is allows us to take care of some of those immediate needs that have been asked for this year, or we just have to pump those down and hold those for another year. So what I would suggest, that's really your two options, is if you want to remain status quo, then freeze it. Otherwise, we can't do status quo and meet the needs under your current structure.
What is the number?
It's anywhere between fourteen and seventeen million across the entire county, but then when you start figuring out how you handle the hybrid and what you do with the tax rates, that changes the whole discussion.
I mean, what is, what is the tax rate? You want us to?
I don't have one, because we're not done, we haven't finished our review. And that's, it's a needs-based structure.
That's the direction that you need, what to do to suit.
So we know what to do with the budget.
Probably, we're going to love it until we get there.
That's my point. That's my point. We don't know, we don't have enough information right now.
So you just not do anything then?
I didn't say that, Frank.
Yeah, you did.
I'm saying that we need, we need to gather support from our, our partners, gather information and understand what we need to do now. I think you said you had seventeen million dollars worth of capital request?
That's the request.
Their request is.
The total is seventeen million.
Seventeen million, for sure.
But that's not a clean request, nor is the request that we would recommend funding.
No, it is, we have, it has not gone through the scrubbing process, I guess is the best way to put it.
So have you asked what the impact would be to their service if, if the funding stayed at cravels?
We, no, with all of them, because we haven't got all of them yet. But, yeah, we have that conversation as to what, what are your service impacts, what your requests, and we walked through every line item, just like we do with our individual departments, and questioned increases in training, increases in bunker gear, do you have to do it this year, can it wait? Is there an FPA standard that says all of your SCBA balls have to be replaced now because they don't work together like they should? Or your AEDs, are they the same ones they use on the EMS trucks so that you can transfer your patients? And if you're going to buy them, should you be buying them off of this contract or this contract? So it's.
And is this a year to change out your tablets and your engines, or can you postpone that? I mean, there, there is a myriad of issues, everything from capital to operating, that when we meet with them, that we are hearing. Some may are maybe more discretionary than others. Others, I don't think are discretionary at all.
Well, and that's my, I'd like to push it until next year, but I can't say whether something that's life safety can be pushed until next year. I don't know. That's something that I think the conversations that you're having, they can say whether or not they could live with a zero increase. And then come back to us and find out, or can we do a very small increase? There may be some things that just have to be done.
And my guess, some of, some of your departments, the two that I'm thinking of specifically, I don't know that they could do it with the funding we gave them this year. I think they may need additional funding because of the circumstances they're in right now.
Well, the kind of way our process works is it's a two-step process, actually it's three. They submit, we collate, we pull it together, we do, put it all together so we can see the history and everything all in one format. Then they come in, we go through the process, takes about an hour, we go through every line item, ask the questions, ask about their service level, what's their staffing, how many volunteers do you have, how long are your radios, how many are you replacing, you know, the VHF radios, and so forth. Then we come up with our recommendation as to what we would recommend based on the conversation and the expertise of our staff, including Curtis, and then we send that back out to them. If they see that, then they, they have the opportunity to ask for another meeting, or call us back and tell us, we need to talk about this more because we don't think or disagree with what you did. So there's a second step, we call it a homeless appeal, you know, pleading process, but, which is no different than we do with any of our departments. Just like if we, if we make a recommendation on Sheriff's behalf, he sees that before you see it. If he disagrees, he calls us up and says, no, you can't cut this, and here's why. We offer them a chance to make a trade, you know, something else in their budget to reduce against that, to keep us whole, or to make a serious case for why we can't reduce it. Then the VFDs, which are a little different than our departments, actually have that last step process during the political side of it, and they've exercised that opportunity quite often, to be able to come back to you as a commission and say, we told the manager this wasn't going to be enough, now we're telling you this is not going to be enough. We need you to take care of it from their perspective. But at that point, what the manager has done is baked together a full budget, balanced budget proposal, and given it to you. You then as a commission have the ability to reject it, modify it, no changes made, but that's where then that public legislative process occurs, the public hearings, and that starts on, in the first of May. But what I would think from our perspective, if we, if your direction is to go with the hybrid version, we will try to, in the short run, take care of those most immediate needs at those VFDs, then in the long run, work out the contracts, the horizon needs, the staffing plan, all of those things, so we understand from you as a commission what your affordability factor is against that. And I think that that's a, that's a viable plan, transitional plan, moving forward. Otherwise, I think we run some risk of getting to next year and having requests in such a way that, that we, the box is going to be so huge, we won't be able to deal with it all. So that kind of, I mean, I think it's, I know it's a process issue, we've kind of worked it through it, but I think we can address the commissioner's concerns about being sure that there's input, and on the standard side of it, being sure that the VFDs have a hand in setting the standards. I think it's, it's our job as the county, and the county, and you as the county commission, our job to recommend to you and you as the board to establish the funding mechanism. I don't see that changing based on the VFD's input. Their, they should be, their concern is standards of fire. Not, you know, just like in EMS, we didn't set, we, EMS didn't have a hand in deciding the mechanism of funding. You as a commission will decide a budget time to what level you will fund it, and the mechanism for, for doing that. And all they should really be concerned about is a lot more funding. I know we probably have other stuff to have to go on to tonight, but is there?
Do we, do we believe we have a consensus? I certainly don't want to.
Is that clear that you said you could meet the disparity of needs for those departments with the hybrid model?
Yes.
And did I understand that, that the hybrid model will allow us to develop those service delivery contracts over the next year?
I believe so.
Yes.
And you were going to bring us back on, you know, the contracts will be worked out, we're going to talk to these fire departments, find out what we're going to get, find out that, and you've already spoken to several of them, you've got three more to go, right?
But they, they heard the same spiel from, the only thing that's new from last year to this year.
Is that Immigrants and Stalings and the taxes.
Is, is the hybrid. We did not present them with a hybrid option last year. And we do understand that there's, that if we go forward this year, there's a public education component that has to be involved.
For now, stylings and immigrants are being protected, that they will have.
Under the hybrid version, we would recommend a mix match of the rate, and looking at their equipment, just like we have in the past, we've made a recommendation on what we believe that the combined tax rate should be in that area, while trying to take care of those other fee districts and have those needs.
Just going to say it one more, I think what I'm hearing.
Hybrid.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry.
Well, it's not fair to all that.
We're, we're starting to get real close to having to put together a budget, and I'm starting to get a little nervous.
Well, we want to make sure that we don't get a consensus. Are you a county commissioner, or are you?
And to be clear, I was only in Tennessee and it was all straight to other, other areas of what they do, it wasn't suggesting our folks.
I heard that same story, Jeff.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Yes.
Yes.
So do you want to, yeah.
Make a motion, I move to reset my special meeting to reconvene at fifteen minutes, six o'clock, in the board's conference room, first floor, Union County Government Center.